5:45, so I will call to order the June 5th meeting, a regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Seth, you'll rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe see. We have no one present, signed up for public comment time. Is anyone online seeking recognition?
No, Madam Mayor.
I think that's a record. Okay. So we will go into, so we will go ahead and look at consideration of the agenda. And we do have one item to add to the consent agenda.
Mayor of all, members of the City Council, at your places is a resolution to permit the possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the 2025 Rhythm &amp; Brew Concert Series, year 13 or so, 14, blue. And we are getting our ABC permit to do that down on the South and the Main Street. So we have a resolution by the City Council authorizing the distribution of alcohol on a public street.
Anything else that anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda? Not a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the consent agenda as amended.
The regular agenda.
Yeah, regular agenda, not consent agenda.
Regular agenda, yeah.
As amended.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, we've got the agenda. Now, the consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Not a motion to approve?
I'm for it. Right. I'm for the City Council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and all of those items have been approved. Okay, we have a presentation this evening.
Mayor of all, members of the City Council, I'd like to ask Mr. Jeff Miller to please stand so everybody, the public can see him. Everybody knows Jeff, but we're happy, staff made a recommendation to City Council some time ago to establish a city liaison position that would help us interact with other local governments in Henderson County, as well as our state officials and federal officials. And we could think of no better person to approach than Jeff to do that. His role, he's, it's a volunteer, it's not a paid position, so Jeff, thank you for the time that you give us. And it will just be an opportunity to, as another arm of the city, as we're all busy doing our daily stuff, to work with us and to move forward, strategic vision and objectives and priorities of the City Council. So I wanted to formally recognize Jeff and welcome him back to our team as our city liaison and say thank you for your willingness to continue to serve your community, Jeff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your willingness to continue serving. Okay, public hearings, we have a bunch. First one is our fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget adoption.
Mayor of all, members of the City Council, it's my pleasure to present the recommended budget for your fiscal year 2025, 2026. Before I'll start, I know our Battalion Chief, Battalion 9, is watching on Zoom, so give a shout out to Battalion 9 over there. You know, you know the fire department, they're always paying attention to what we're doing here in City Hall, so I want to give them a shout out. So, your budget, as is typical, we, budget is based on your vision, reminds you of your vision is to provide a vibrant mountain city where the government and citizens work together for a high quality of life. And our mission is, we are committed to providing quality, efficient services to all citizens, visitors, businesses, through open communication, timely responses, and quality results. Your budget is based on these council goals, ranked as, public safety is the first priority, compensation of benefits and staff development, second, number three, strong infrastructure, strategic housing plan, growth management and community character, our investing in parks, enhance sustainability citywide, transportation planning, city boards and volunteers, and support downtown businesses. It was developed based on these goals the council has set on their staff retreat, or the council staff retreat, February 27th and 28th. And we are entering our final of a three-year plan, we'll start a new plan next year as we start planning for the 27 FY budget development process. Also, I will go back and say that each goal was tracked through our strategic planning documents, and it's available on our website, and we'll continue to update those. Also, this budget is special in the fact that we are also not only focusing your normal priorities, your normal goals, but also those as it relates to our resiliency recovery plan coming out of Hurricane Helene. And you have eight priorities there that are established by staff and the City Council. Again, these will be tracked, you will start seeing, getting regular reports on how we are performing and how we are meeting these priorities, but they include investing in redundant and resilient critical infrastructure, again, housing is a high priority, communications and storytelling, our emergency response planning, financial resiliency, debris management, floodplain mitigation, and trained and right side staff to help us, that will be one of our, all eight of these will be a strong focus as we go through our recovery over the next 12 to 18 months. These are the six focus areas the council has adopted, great public services, sound infrastructure, numerous amenities, strong partnership, economic vitality, and financial Your total budget, total recommended budget is $68,623,860. Where does that money come from? 3.45% come from restricted intergovernmental, typically your sales tax, things like that. Permits and fees, 2.28%, sales and service, 1.25%, investment earnings, less than 1%, .36%, other tax and licenses, .03, and miscellaneous, .02. Your largest pieces of the pie are Avalon taxes, 61.25, and then unrestricted intergovernmental, apologize, the unrestricted is your sales tax, 31.36. There. Where does it go? Your largest portion is going to your general fund at 45%, 44% goes to your water sewer fund, and then you can see the smaller funds, how that money is divvied out. So, that's your total recommended budget. Some of our, continuing with the budget at a glance, our tax rate will continue to be 52 cents per $100, no tax increase from a current year, no increase on your Main Street and 7th Avenue MSD taxes, they'll stay it together at 21 cents per $100. So, again, no changes on any tax rates for the upcoming year. Your water sewer rates, we'll see a modest increase there of 8% in water and 9% for sewer. The rate differential between the inside and outside rate, water customer rates has lowered by 5%, reflecting the City Council's commitment to the county commissioners to equalize rates by 2030. So, we are down to 120% for your outside water rates, so honoring that commitment that's set some time ago. Your rates and fees, stormwater will go up $1, $8 per month as Mike Huffman works on his master plan, and the non-residential cap is increasing to 400, the cap is now at $400. Your fee schedule, see, the fee schedule says the cap is 350, that was a mistake. As we make our motion tonight, we'll ask you to make a technical correction to the fee schedule to adjust that cap to $400. Your environmental services fee is, for our 32-gallon can will be $30, a 96-gallon can will go to $32, that is a $7 increase. To make this fund sustainable, it also allows us to hire, most importantly, three workers to allow us to continue to provide high levels of service and eliminate when we do have absences, where we have to pull other team members from other divisions in public works, which then takes away from street repair, takes away from parks maintenance, and so this will allow us to make sure that environmental services is sustainable in providing high levels of service. Parking, no increase in parking rates, we are proposing a $15 increase for your voter vehicle registration rule. That funding is earmarked specifically for maintaining streets, ADA compliant sidewalks and compliance with ProWAG, which is unfunded federal mandate. If you remember our presentation previously related to ProWAG, it is, went into effect with the city that anytime we resurface streets now, we have to ensure every other sidewalk infrastructure, things like that, are in good working order and meet the ProWAG standard, which is related to ADA, which includes sidewalk repairs, it also may include pedestrian signalization and things like that. So we're seeing a significant cost increase when we have to maintain, resurface our streets, and so that was the need for the additional registration rule. If you look at our tax rate, we sit right in the middle of our peer group at 52 cents per $100, and we provide a high level of service. I will continue to point out that most of these folks are larger than us and also have a larger footprint, which I think is something you should be proud of, that our tax rate is right there in the middle, and you provide a high level of service on a much smaller tax base than many of these folks on this chart, if not all. Total budget, again, some personnel highlights, 4% cost of living adjustment, following through with your commitment to our staff, we have a 3% 401K match, and with an average merit increase of 2.56. We believe that cost of living adjustment probably leads the region. You also are focusing on long-term financial sustainability, budget centers on, again, rebuilding Hurricane Helene, continuing to offer high-quality services to our residents. As I mentioned, we have a commitment to compensation of benefits for our workforce, you'll see there, of additional funds to recruit and retain by covering increasing medical insurance and our retirement costs. I'll talk a little bit more about personnel costs and insurance when we get to the general, each of the, each of the funds a little bit later. You also prioritize strong infrastructure with key water sewer projects, including treatment plant line, pump station improvements, that was evidence this past year with Hurricane Helene, when we were able to re, repair and get 100% of our customers back with water within one week, and 100% of our sewer customers within 14 days, something we should be proud of, and I think we led the region in those improvements and that work. Continue to enhance our public safety by funding 911 software, CPR device, and installing swift water rescue equipment for our fire department. Very few new positions this year, I mentioned the three environmental service workers, we're two water sewer line maintenance mechanics, again, another mandate out there as we work on NC DOT roads, they are requiring more and more having, I mean, it makes common sense, work zone safety, but they're requiring more and more flagging operations, and so we need to hire those workers just to serve in the role of flagging to allow us to continue to maintain the size of our crews. We're adding one downtown worker to continue to maintain our beautiful Main Street and 7th Avenue area, and we're adding one fleet maintenance technician due to the fact that we have brought our upfitting of our vehicles, particularly law enforcement vehicles, we had outsourced that to a company to install radios and striping and things like that, and it's taken eight, nine months, sometimes a year to get that done, so we're bringing that in-house, we're not only doing it faster, but we're doing it cheaper. So, we're going to take that savings and fund that position. This is your general fund, again, no tax increase, you see your total revenues there, $28,194.56, expenditures, $30,969.077, you see other financing at $357,534. We've appropriated just over $3 million in your fund balance appropriated, appropriation to balance the budget, the balance, the fund balance, under the budget scenario, we started at $11 million, and then in the year, if we use the $3 million, which we never do, at $7.9 million. Some highlights related to fund balance is, our estimated fund balance at the end of the year, actually, we expect it to go up, we don't expect to use that $3 million, we actually expect to put money back next year based on our revenue forecast. As you know, we forecast five years, we could go out 10 or 15, but as you know, that is not accurate, but our five-year forecast, looking at our estimation, will actually bring in more revenue than expenditure if things hold true. And you'll see our, at the end of the year, our estimated unassigned fund balance will be $7.4 million, which is above our city policy of 25%. Main expenditures there are your personnel and benefits, we saw a significant increase in medical insurance costs this year, as you know, our insurance pool, we are a member of, ceased their medical operation, or their health insurance operations, and we have now gone to a new provider, saw significant increases, which was very much the case for many of our peers who were part of the same insurance pool. Our operating funds are just up 826, most of that in Powell Bill funding, which will go directly into your street resurfacing and repairs, you've got $297,000 in capital, most of that going to critical life-saving equipment and other things, and then debt service up just a little bit for vehicle and equipment, debt at 4.2 million total there. Again, no changes in the tax rate and sales and tax and growth and development. I would say that we're particularly proud of the work we've done because we are seeing the significant increase in costs, but we were able to maintain the tax rate based on the growth that the cities have. We continue to be a place, a destination for folks to come in, into this part of the world, and so I think that is evident by the fact that we're able to withstand these cost increases without a tax increase. Main Street Fund, again, tax rate, no change there, expenditures, you see the personnel costs, the medical insurance trend will go across all funds as we spread those with all workers, so you see that increase there, operating, actually a decreasing in operating in the Main Street Fund of $85,000, our capital is up $20,000, and our debt service is actually dropping one point, just over $1,000, $1,500. Our fund balance, the general fund is helping to, to help support the Main Street Fund at $88,434, that's our budget, and we don't expect to actually use that, and then the fund balance appropriation is $87,000, we expect to end the year at a fund balance of $67,200, one of our smaller funds, but it does support all of our activities in, on Main Street and 7th Avenue. Oh, actually, I take that back, just Main Street. 7th Avenue MSD Fund, 21 cents, equal rate, no change there, you see the salary and the benefits, operating costs is, saw a decrease in operating costs, no capital, no debt service, budget transfer from the general fund just over $16,000, expect not to use that, estimated fund balance appropriation, $64,076, $766, end of the year, fund balance will just be out. So we'll be spinning down that fund balance to pay for a number of things on 7th Avenue. Your Water and Sewer Fund, your second largest fund, user rates plus or minus 8.5%, you see the water sales revenue at 8%, sewer charge revenue at 9%, our system development fees will hit the 50% mark effective July 1. Again, as I mentioned, your rate differential continues to drop in accordance to your policy to 120%. Our main focus here are expenditures, personnel and benefits, we see a deduct in operating costs of $40,000, your pay-go capital, we see a deduct of $18,000, your debt service increases by $774,000, most of that is taking on your revenue bond that we just issued for a number of improvements going forward, you'll see $400,000 transferred to vehicles and equipment, and $100,000 transferred to capital reserve fund for future projects and future economic development expenditures there. I will go back to the transfer to vehicles and equipment, $75,000, I believe, is being dedicated, is it 75, Brian? $75,000 is dedicated to generators and transfer switches, as you know, the council has a priority and has had so for 10 years to make sure that our pump stations have backup generation and the appropriate transfer stations. Again, this was evidenced in Helene when we were able to restore water within a week and sewer within two weeks because of that, and many folks never lost service because of these backup generation, even the ones that sites that we could not get to, the generators kept working and kept the system functioning. The bottom is your fund balance and bond covenant, which is our key indicator, like fund balance on the general fund side, we use the bond covenants to determine the health of the system on the water sewer side, you can see that we have to have a minimum on both cases, there's two bond tests, A and B, with a minimum being 1.00 for the first bond test and 1.0 for the second. You can see at the end of this year, we will exceed that at 1.47 and 1.09 respectively, and we're projecting fiscal year 26, the bond covenant to be 1.46 and 1.18 on the other side. So you have that, and you see the revenues and expenditures there. Parking, no change there as it relates to the rates, you see the expenditures as it relates to personnel and benefits, operating costs, no capital, continue to pay your debt service at 811, 950. Fund balance, budget, budget transfer from the general fund at 252, 649, estimated only using a portion of that from the general fund at the end of the year, 113,907. This fund has no fund balance and is general fund supported, which will continue to be for some period as we continue to move through the park. Stormwater Fund, revenues increasing to $8, ERU up $1, and the cap going up to $400, increase of 50 according to our rate plan for that as we move towards selling a revenue bond or some type of financing in the future to fund a large number of stormwater projects that we see coming, and also to support that program, which is again, a federal mandate for us. You see the total revenues at 1.6 million, expenditures at 1.5, with other financing $150,000. Most of those projects, most of this fund is used, the expenditures are related to capital improvements and debt service, and we're transferring for the first time $150,000 to a capital reserve for future projects as we develop our master plan there. But we do see an increase in our fund balance at the end of the year, $109,000, so that'll be positive at the end of the year. So this fund is stable and continuing to do what it needs to do as we move toward our revenue bond projects or stormwater master plan projects. Environmental Service Fund is everything related to solid waste, you see an increase of $7 per month to, for $30 for 32 gallon and $32 for 96. Personnel costs there with the increase of three environmental service workers, operating cost up $77,000, no capital this year, we do have some debt service of $14,000, no fund balance, no general fund transfer in, and we expect to increase the fund balance of this fund at 125 at the end of the year. So we're getting this, getting this fund very much on solid ground and self-supporting. This is, we provide a high level of service in our environmental service fund, and we're continuing to become more efficient, and we have, as we have previously presented to the City Council, ways to offset future, looking at ways to offset future rate increases as it relates to customer audits, as well as changing our equipment and reducing the number of folks that go into an automated collection in the future and things like that. This, return to slide with your budget in total, all funds shown here, total fund balance of $68,623,860, you'll see the percentages broken down of your budget, and that is your budget in total there. And I think at this point, the next slide, thanks to City Council for your work, numerous meetings, including your retreat and your budget workshop, I also would like to thank Assistant City Manager Brian Polly and his budget team, Adam and Jenny, and all our department heads for the work that they've done to put this budget together. It's physically sound, it's responsible and sustainable, and we, you know, keep the city moving forward as it relates to providing a high level of service to our citizens. Staff stands by to answer any questions, and I'll call on Brian or Adam or Jenny for everything that I got wrong if I don't know the answer. So, we'll stand by to answer any questions from City Councils.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
I don't actually have a question, I just have comments.
Is that okay? Okay, you want to do it now?
Or another time?
No, it's just, we have the public hearing, so we want to do it before or after. Okay. All right. So this is time for public to comment on the budget. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
So we will open the public hearing, we have one person signed up this evening to speak, Glenn Lang. And if you could give, for the clerk's record, give your name and address.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Glenn Lang, and I live at 623 Front Cliff Lane. I'm a member of the Hendersonville Tree Board, and I'm speaking for the board as well as myself tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to address the City Council concerning the proposed budget. The Tree Board is opposed to the payment in lieu fee that is included in the budget proposal. We also oppose this very low fee at the time that the tree ordinance was being considered by the council a year ago. We are taking this public input opportunity, I hope you don't mind, to again explain why this fee should be substantially increased to reflect the true landscape and environmental value of trees in the city. The payment in lieu fee and its calculation method was established by city staff to allow a developer who would have difficulty complying with the full tree canopy preservation requirement of the tree. tree canopy preservation requirement of the tree ordinance an option to supply funding for tree canopy management in the city as compensation for removing trees that should be preserved. The Tree Board agrees with the payment in lieu system, but not the outcome that ended up in the tree ordinance. The $1.53 per square foot of tree canopy fee is the lowest fee of any North Carolina city that I can find that has a pay-in lieu tree preservation system. Our fee is based on the average cost of planting a one-inch caliper tree, in other words, a sapling, that costs approximately 350 bucks. Using the average tree canopy square footage of small, medium and large trees collectively from the existing tree ordinance, the tree canopy of a single tree is worth just $3 or 350 dollars. Nationally accepted standards for professional appraisals of trees have been established by the International Society of Arbiculture authored by the Council of Tree and Landscape Appraisers. As an example, using those standards, a single 14-inch sugar maple would have a landscape value of anywhere between $5,000 and $15,000, depending on its location. The calculation example in the existing tree ordinance puts the pay-in lieu value of two full acres of trees at just 13,000. The city of Asheville sets its payment in lieu tree canopy value from $5 to $30 per square foot, depending on the location of the development. The city of Charlotte and a few other cities in North Carolina utilize average tax value as a basis for calculating their payment in lieu fee. The city's recent tree canopy cover assessment puts the environmental value of our tree canopy at $7 million each and every year. Our payment in lieu fee completely ignores the very real landscape and environmental monetary value of our existing tree canopy. The Tree Board realizes that the method of calculating this fee is already set in the existing tree ordinance, and you're not going to modify that fee tonight, I'm sure. We hope you will give this issue some thought and allow the Tree Board and city staff to work to come up with a more realistic payment in lieu fee calculation method that truly reflects the true value of our trees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lang, for your comments and for your service on the Tree Board. We do appreciate that. Is there anyone online wishing to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have one hand raised. Ken Fitch, you are unmuted.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Paton Street. The production of a budget is indeed an extraordinary undertaking, and now before us as a major accomplishment. It was announced in the celebratory music video with its choice choreographed segments, including the startling appearance by Mayor Volk, revealing skills and talents not heretofore publicly reckoned of. And an ad emergent appearance on the front page of one of the local newspapers is not an accurate representation of the formidable tasks he undertakes with his placid exterior as he confronts the multiplicity of programs, systems and spreadsheets that few could easily describe or understand. But his skills are evident in the document under consideration as they were in his work in the realization of Fire Station 1. But the budget is also a representation of policies and priorities. And most appropriate, the priority financial commitment in the budget is to personnel benefits. We remember the hurricane and what our staff accomplished above and beyond the call of duty. Our staff have earned public admiration for their individual and collective service to us all. So yes, we have individual heroes like Mike Cupman, Alan Cliff, or Adam Steyer who have come to our attention, but also collectively the beloved Public Works Department or the Fire Department with their amazing clusters of emergency responses who want to go on and on and on through department after department to honor these people who provide the essential services to all who live and work here. How many cities can confer MVP recognition on a yearly, monthly, weekly, and often daily basis that attests to the importance of the dedication and amazing service staff provides? The budget is committed to provide an important reassurance as we encounter a time of economic uncertainty. So the budget does include co-increases and a continuance of benefits that many staff feel essential to sustain their ability to provide the high level of service that we experience. It has been acknowledged that some of the programs entail considerable expense, but we must consider their value. There is society increase in premiums for health insurance as the city engages a new provider whom which employees now look with hope for a high level of care provision. The benefits all to include the wellness program, the recognition for the participants and us, the benefit of maintaining high levels of healthy functioning. We are speaking to the priority issues of health and safety here, as forcefully focused by Ambassador Miller when he was on Capitol. And we realize that our health and safety depends on the health and wellness of those who protect us, often with great physical demands, such as fire, police, public works, and water and sewer, when they are called upon to serve in many hazardous and physically demanding situations. So yes, we are reminded when we see the Fire Department staff engaged in their rigorous outdoor training so that at a moment's notice, they are in the truck in 45 seconds to respond to an emergency to save a life. Our Public Works personnel engage in major tasks, and police who must confront situations of utmost personal peril to protect us. And we can only imagine what water and sewer folk encounter above and underground. Even Justin Ward, who joins us at meetings, when encountered on his workout, is seriously at work to be prepared. There are those whose tasks may seem sedentary, but wellness extends to functioning in a multitude of decisions and critical transactions for which they are responsible. And for dexterity and immediacy and a response in overextended situations, Alice in Justice, how does she do what she does? But ultimately, these benefits are to us who live, work, and visit here, whose health and safety depends on the individual and collective commitment of our staff. It is important to note that the staff benefits have a critical impact for those staff members whose salary does not meet what is described as a local living wage. And the budget document does announce a commitment pursuing a long-term living wage target. But thus immediately, the benefit package becomes essential for those workers who have yet to achieve a necessary salary level position that delivers the local living wage calculation. Yes, there are items in the budget about which there could and should be further discussion. And yes, we are aware of the pending increase in fees for some services that yes, will stress many personal economic budgets. And there are other feeing issues of which you are certainly aware. And as the tree city residents, the tree payment in lieu of $1.53 per square foot is locally inadequate. In general, one must express a caution in the application of development growth to offset utility infrastructure and city budgeting, because growth does generate a host of other issues that have functional and economic impact that may create an imbalance. But yes, tonight, we remember the hurricane and the efforts of all working together to bring us through. And the work of this budget to continue a high level of service delivery is an achievement for which we are grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone else online?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we will close this public hearing. Counsel, comments? You have something?
I did. I just wanted to reiterate this council and councils before us, just the continued investment in our infrastructure and how it paid dividends. Not just in our ability to get water and sewer back up to our manufacturing partners and industrial partners, but it really helped keep our local economy afloat because there were people coming into Henderson County to dine, to eat, to grocery shop. And so just, I think it's, I'm just proud of us for making these investments. And we've got state partners that have helped us through grant projects. We have amazing staff that continue applying for grants for this. And, you know, many of our neighbors are not seeing no tax increase this time. And just, you know, by budgeting and being smart with how we happen, it's paid off. And I'm just proud of us for being able to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Anything? Would you like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget ordinance. Fiscal year 2025 to 2026, water and sewer capital reserve fund ordinance. Fiscal year 2025 to 2026, stormwater capital reserve fund ordinance. Fiscal year 2025 to 2026, resolution of intent to follow the capital improvement plan and schedule rates and fees. Fiscal year 2025 to 2026, micro purchase threshold resolution. And fiscal year 25 to 26, pay-in classification schedule with the technical correction as noted by the city manager, increasing the 50% credit maximum amount to $400 to match the stormwater cap.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of adopting the fiscal year 25-26 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. We will have our budget for next year. And thank you to everybody involved. It was a difficult year and had to imagine the number of hours that we've been spent. So thank you to the finance team, the city manager, and the city council. All right, next public hearing. We have a rezoning, additional zoning district, Pace Hendersonville.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you mentioned, we have a CZD here from Pace Hendersonville for an existing property, existing structure at 201 Sugarloaf Road, currently the Cascades Mountain Resort. And there is a proposal from this applicant to convert that hotel and lodging use to a 120 multifamily units. The size of the site is just under seven acres, with that 120 units that would provide a relatively dense density with just under 18 units per acre. The site, the property currently has a split zoning, which we'll see, which is C3 and CHMU. It used to be two separate parcels. Those parcels were combined, so we ended up with a split zoning. The proposed zoning would unify it under urban residential, and we'll get into those details. A neighborhood compatibility meeting was held on March 7. It was lightly attended, but there were some key points of discussion that came up. And, you know, I think primarily between neighbors who had questions about safety and security, those were kind of, that was kind of a key point of the discussion. Taking a look at the site, upper left photo is from just about where you would turn right onto the access road, where the bend in Sugarloaf is located. Looking at the most visible part of the property from Sugarloaf. And then in the upper right is between the main building and what I refer to as the annex building in the rear. The bottom left photo is looking over at the adjacent property. So that's the roof of an adjacent property. And then the blue roof in the background is the Pancake House right there. So those are some adjacent properties. The bottom right is a view of the open space at the rear of the property with I-26 further off in the background there. So the site plan depicts, as I mentioned, the reuse of an existing hotel complex. Features the primary building and the annex building. Depicts the conversion to 120 units. Again, approximately 18 units per acre. The total footprint of the building is, of the buildings is 64,713 square feet. Highest point, the highest measured height is at 25 feet. There is 116, almost 117,000 square feet of open space, which equals 40% of the site, which exceeds the minimum requirements by 10%. And there's also 10% of that open space is common space, categorized as common space. There is no tree preservation required per the ordinance, but the developer proposes to retain all the healthy vegetation on the site as well as bring the landscaping on the site into compliance with the current standards. A detailed landscaping plan was not provided because this would be, it would trigger compliance with the amount of money that is being used for the reinvestment in relationship to the tax value. So in, you know, I guess it's a kind of chicken or the egg. The, that investment's not been made, so they haven't triggered compliance. So they don't have a landscaping plan yet. However, they have stated and have notes in here that they will provide a detailed landscaping plan at the final site plan point and that it would be compliant and meet all the standards. There's one point of access to the site from the bend in Sugarloaf that I mentioned. And the state route 1734 that runs along the right side of the site is the former configuration of Sugarloaf Road before I-26. In terms of the forecasted estimated trips that would be generated from the site with, under this use of multifamily, the peak AM trips are projected to be at 48 trips. The PM trips are expected to be around 61 trips with a daily trip estimate of 809 trips. The applicant is proposing to utilize existing internal walkways. And where no connections exist, they're proposing new seven-foot wide sidewalks and crosswalks that would be installed. Off-site sidewalks are proposed to be offset with a fee in lieu. The existing site accommodates 181 parking spaces. The requirement is only for 136. Planning staff has not identified any outstanding comments that are not addressed otherwise by the developer's proposed conditions. NCDOT has stated that they would require a TIA because Sugarloaf Road is identified as a thoroughfare that needs improvement in our comprehensive transportation plan, which is a document that our NPO works with NCDOT and local municipalities and counties to develop those plans. Ours, however, has not been updated in quite some time. It will come up again, this TIA conversation. I mentioned the trip generation, 48, 61, 809. Those are all under what our typical TIA requirements are for our general standards. requirements are for our general standards. Urban residential zoning, however, does have a statement that any urban residential development has to do a TIA. And there is some discretion given to whether that TIA is done before as part of the rezoning or if it's done after the rezoning and part of the final site plan review. But I'll come back to that under our conditions. Taking a look at the elevations, the applicant did provide elevations of the existing structures. There's no changes to the facade. Elevations are a requirement of the urban residential zoning district. The primary function of providing these elevations for an existing building for this conditional rezoning was to identify what architectural standards would relief need to be granted, given the, from which relief would need to be granted, given that the existing structure does not fully conform with the urban residential design standards. So, providing this allowed us to identify which standards they would need to outline and ask conditions from. They also provided professional photos of the exterior to help complement those elevations. And so, that brings us to the conditions that have been proposed and mentioned. There would be a number of conditions related to requesting relief from the architectural design standards. These conditions relate to provision of architectural details, the amount of reflectivity found on each facade, the amount of glass that's used, tinted glass. Some building walls do not meet the requirements for placing offsets at the required minimum spacing. And the rear building does not have a building entrance that faces the street. And so, all of those are addressed, and each facade of each building are addressed in these conditions that are outlined. Additionally, conditions are also needed related to granting relief from the site design. So, that was architectural design for site design. These include the internal access and connectivity and the provision of a seven-foot sidewalk along the property frontage. So, there's not internal streets in this case, there's an existing parking lot. And so, that connectivity and, you know, street network is not able to be achieved. And as I mentioned, they would pay a fee in lieu for the sidewalk if that's agreed upon. The planning board did, I mentioned this, but they did propose that the TIA be deferred until after the rezoning, but before the final site plan approval. So, they did not want to go as far as making a recommendation that would supersede, you know, there seemed to be some sensitivity towards city council having the final say in this. And so, they phrased it this way, that they would just defer, they would recommend this deferral, but they wouldn't go beyond what the standards of the ordinance say and fully recommend that it be waived. But that is on the plate for your consideration, given that this is an existing use that generates traffic already and that converting the use would, you know, in theory, would bring, the trip generation actually would be reduced. So, I'll let the applicant bring that to your attention. So, taking a look at the six criteria we consider, first look at the future land use map. In this case, the area, the subject property and the surrounding area is designated as mixed-use employment. In the adjacent properties flanking in all directions are also had the same character area. This description includes employment centers, which contain a mix of uses, including office, light, industrial, and institutional buildings with multiple stories. They offer traditional workspaces and can be supplemented by unconventional collaborative workspaces where innovation and education can be fostered. Highly walkable areas with clustered parking and minimized vehicular circulation. Incorporation of some retail, recreational, and residential uses to create a live, work, and play environment is supported. And it goes on to talk about open space and trails. The comprehensive plan, consistence, consistency analysis, there was not much in terms of the land supply or land suitability since this property was already developed. It is located in an area that is designated as moderate for development intensity, given that it's in close proximity to the interstate and the main intersection with 64. It is located between these two focused intensity nodes, one that is around Thompson Street and 64, and one that is over Highland Square. And so, those intensity nodes are where we want to focus our development and create walkable areas of higher intensity. In this case, you're kind of, it's kind of straddling between two of those areas. Staff does find the petition and the site plan to be generally consistent with the comp plan, the future land use and conservation map, and the character area description for multi-generational living. And the density and scale of the proposed project align with the focus area, focus intensity node that I discussed. Taking a look at compatibility, we first look at the future land use, the current land use and zoning map. The subject property is located within the corporate limits of the city. Parcel is zone C3 and CHMU. The CHMU saying was put in place in 2021 to accommodate a planned conversion of the rear annex building to convert it to multifamily. Multifamily is not permitted under C3, so this rezoning was needed. The conversion to apartments did not occur. However, the two separate parcels were later recombined into one, resulting in the split zoning. The subject property has been the site of the Cascades Mountain Resort. The subject property is, subject property is just over six and a half acres in size, contains two, two-story principal buildings and associated parking. The dominant zoning in this area of town is the C3 highway business. There, the other predominant zoning district in this area is PCD, Planned Commercial Development, just to the north of this site. The land uses in this area are typical for interstate-oriented commercial uses, with hotels, motels being the most prominent use, as well as restaurants, gas stations, and self-storage facilities. Staff finds that the general location of the project and its proximity to a mix of land uses is compatible with the city's overall growth strategies. The only area of inconsistency when we look at the, under the Gen H goals, is for safe streets and trails as it pertains to site access and connectivity and a general lack of walkability in this area. The, in terms of the guiding principles, both sense of place and connectivity were both identified as being inconsistent. But otherwise, it was consistent with those goals and guiding principles. In terms of the change conditions, this relates to the, you know, the documented need for additional housing units. This conversion would help address that need. And staff finds that the public interest is to provide additional housing units as well, as well as for the general redevelopment of this property, reinvestment in this property. The staff finds that the proposed development would efficiently utilize existing services and infrastructure. I'd mentioned the NCDOT has stated that a TIA may be required. Sugarloaf Road is the NCDOT street. The, despite, you know, there being, lacking a landscape, detailed landscaping plan, staff finds that there will ultimately be a net increase in vegetation if the proposed plan goes forward. So, in terms of the effect on natural environment. The planning board put forth the consistency statement that is found on the screen and the reasonableness statement with the rationale for approval as presented. Staff has also drafted reasonableness for, and rationale for denial. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Any questions? Matt, would you, you said that at the neighborhood compatibility meeting, there were concerns about safety. Can you talk about that as much?
There, existing activity on the site, there was this discussion about kind of a walking, what I call like a goat path, you know, a walking path naturally occurring from people walking around kind of the rear of the property, potentially accessing other properties, neighboring properties. So, there was questions about securing the property, putting up fencing, things of that nature.
And were there, were there any discussions about that coming to fruition at any point?
Yes, the developer indicated that they typically provide fencing and security on their properties.
Thanks.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have another one. Yeah, okay. Um, no, I don't. I'll wait.
All right. Thank you. Would the applicant like to make comments?
Hey, my name is Jacob Glover. I'm the Director of Operations for Pace Living. I want to thank y'all for letting me come here today and just kind of explain a little bit about the project and how excited we are to be here. I've gotten to enjoy a little bit of Hendersonville, so I love the area. And I was listening to that gentleman speak there, and that was quite impressive. He can write a book. But also got to enjoy some of the trails here, and I was amazed at some of the cleanup they did. We did 25-mile hike, and it was amazing to see how quickly everything was cleaned up and allowed people to hike and be a part of that. So, that was exciting. But this project, we came into Hendersonville and we understood that there's a, there's a housing demand for affordable housing here. And we feel like we fit that mold here in the sense of that workforce housing and providing a good model and a great community for people to live. Within this particular project, we look forward to providing them with a convenient style of living, but not only that, a community there. So, we're implementing things such as a pool, gym, workspace, game rooms, they have a movie theater. And so, although around 100 units of these are going to be a little bit condensed, a little bit smaller, they're still going to be able to get out and have a community there. So, we really feel like we can provide a product here that will be suitable for the area and provide them for a safe place to live as well. We basically are looking forward to being able to take the existing structure that is as-is and being able to just add on to it a lot of cosmetic work, a lot of landscape, as you had mentioned, to make it look good and presentable. Of course, utilizing the structures as they sit and then, you know, making sure there is a safe, safety there. We want to provide fencing security. We'll have a property management group that manages, you know, 20,000 units around the southeast that vet every individual there. And that can have a safe place for that workforce individual to come in there, you know. And, you know, a mom with a child, you know, maybe she's a working mom and needs a way to play that's convenient. We're able to take, the reason why we provide, we're going to provide a high-quality product, but we're able to create savings for them because we're able to utilize the existing structure, utility structure that's in the hospitality industry, right? So, we're able to pass those savings along to them. And so, we really feel like it's a great opportunity for Hendersonville, and we look forward to being here if y'all allow us, and I'll open it up for questions.
Questions for Mr. Glover?
Mayor, I have, Jacob, talk a little bit about, will Pace continue to own this product? Or are you selling this to investors? Are you getting entitled and then you sell it to investors?
We're a long-term holder. We're a long-term investor.
So, the other properties y'all have, y'all own all of them or?
Own all of them. Yep. We're at least no later than a 10-year holder. That's our financial breakdown is 10 years, but we're a long-term vision. Yeah.
Is there full-time staff present there?
There will be. There will be. So, typically with, with over 100 units, there'll be two people on site. There'll be a property management there during the day and then one person living on site.
How do you guys plan to address the noise for residential living right on the highway?
So, the vegetation there, surprisingly, I mean, it's grown up. There's a nice buffer area there from the highway. So, we don't, now, been on site a few times. Of course, you do hear the cars, you hear, but this, this building does provide an exterior window already that gives a sound barrier, and then it goes into their unit. So, it has a hallway, so it really don't, you don't hear anything inside of the units. So, it really does protect them from any noise.
I did some online Googling research with, about Pace Construction and some of the difficulties that you guys are having in some other municipalities and cities. Can you speak on that?
Yeah, and.
Myrtle Beach.
Myrtle Beach, yeah. So, Myrtle Beach was some years back, so I've been with the company three and a half years. Myrtle Beach was a, was a, what I know was a development that was made from the investors, some early-on business partner investments that they completed the project, but then wanted to sell out of the project on that one. Now, I've been a part of seven myself that we hold and we contain and we've been successful in. The Myrtle Beach ones, I was not a part of, but my, my partners are out of, out of the country. And so, different times, they have different developers and different partnerships, and sometimes, you know, learning your partners and understanding your partners, I guess they just didn't work out the best in Myrtle Beach. So, and then the Myrtle Beach, I mean, of course, the industry right now, you look up all the hotels that are for sale there. I mean, everything's for sale up there. The economy's just not doing great there.
Do you plan for all of these to be market rate, all of the units?
Yes. Yeah, these are, these are a market. So, we have two different models, right? Two, one model is our government efficiency model, and that's just geared for those individuals that really need that affordability. Now, that, that model will not have any type of amenities spaces. It'd be very condensed on the, you know, to have laundry and insert maybe common area spaces outside. But like I said, we're able to reduce their construction costs, utilize the existing utility structure package, and then pass that savings on to them. But something like this, we'll have a movie theater, a pool, a gym, a co-working space. Of course, the rent's going to be higher, but it still will be in that, it'll still be more, more affordable for a market rate.
Okay. Even though in this situation, you would have kind of minimal construction costs, right? Because you're using an existing building.
Sure. Right. Yeah.
We have a real need for affordable units here.
Sure. Yeah, we definitely use affordable. And then, like I said, I mean, just being able to have that utility structure, it saves them a lot of money each month, having that one payment a month. So, they're not opening up power or ordering their name. So, it gives them savings.
Jacob, later on in the agenda, we have another item related to this property. I assume you're aware of the condition of this site, and if you talk about limited cost, I know there's issues with fire suppression and fire alarm and electrical, and y'all, you're aware of that and then your due diligence as it relates to.
Yes, sir.
To meet the commitments that you're presenting to council.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I was on site before I came here. We've been on site several times. We're aware of all the conditions. We are fully prepared to bring everything up to code, everything up to standard, and making sure that the city is pleased with what we bring.
And has there been any, any discussion about occupancy maximums?
On the units per unit? So, that's, it has, it has been brought up. It's a good question. Typically, to per unit, that's, it comes down to our property management group, who will be the managing partner for this one. Let me do something up for you. So, there is a group. NHE out of Greenville. They have an office in Greenville, NHE. They're going to be the property manager group on this property. So, it's, it's really, we, we allow them to take control, vet each individual, know that there's, got to be a limited amount of individuals there. Now, you know, I don't know the circumstances if a mom and two of her young kids need to be in there. I don't know. We don't, we haven't seen, I haven't seen that before in this model, but, you know, I don't want to say something that's not true. So.
When you say in this model, like kind of insinuating that this is a new, different model than what you've done previously, or is this?
No, we, I consider this a more of a higher-end model. So, more amenities, more amenities spaces, more of a property we put more emphasis on.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah?
What would be, what would the rent be for these units?
That's always a great question. So, I, I can't tell you exactly what they are, but I can give you some rough estimates, you know, 1,100 a month, 1,200 a month, and that takes care of everything.
And that's for a 300 square foot?
So, we will have roughly, 100 units will be 300 square foot, and then we will have 10 one-bedroom and 10 two-bedrooms.
So, the one-bedroom rent would be the same as the two-bedroom?
No, that is not correct. So, that is across the, uh, 100 unit.
I don't know if I feel safe in a unit that small without having a, a hard maximum on occupancy. It's just too, I just feels too risky to me.
Yeah, I mean, our, our, look, our, our standard is always two. Um, but as I mentioned, it, there's no, if there's, if there's a small child involved, you know, if they have a small child, um, you know, that's something that's always looked at, but our hard, our standard is two across the board.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I think it gets tricky because of the housing crisis here. So, my concern would be that people who are in desperate need of a spot would do something that maybe wouldn't necessarily be the safest, just so that they could have a roof over their head and a small space would lend itself to that. Um, so, that's where my concern comes in. I hear what you're saying, too.
Yeah, and the good thing about this property, though, is, and I'll, I'll tell you, kind of maybe help you with that, this property is all interior corridor. So, there is going to be a fob system getting in here. You can't just walk in. It will be, it will be a fob system to get in. It will have cameras 24 hours, 7 hours. It will have security, and so, it won't be, it won't be accessible to the public. Anybody can just come in. Now, unfortunately, you know, with any apartment complex, there is, it's, you know, you can't, some people are going to-
Sure.
You know, act away there, but we put, we put things in place to make sure that, you know, we're not getting a, a fa, a family of six living in a unit, a family of five living in a unit. It's just, it's just not going to happen.
Okay, so, you would put things in place for that?
Yeah, well, our property management group will definitely put, stay, if, yeah, to get that point. I'm just saying, if it goes to that three, there's a kid or something individually like that, I don't know the standard with NHE or, you know.
Of adults versus minors?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we're not having three adults living with each other in there.
Okay.
Right.
Any other questions right now? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
We will open this public hearing. No one here has signed up. Is there anyone online seeking recognition?
No, Madam Mayor.
No. Who's that public hearing?
Pardon, I'm Mayor.
Oh.
Ken Bush Jeffrey.
Okay, all right.
Is Ken or unmuted if you still want to talk?
And I thought it's me, Margaret.
Is he muted or something?
He is unmuted. Ken, you want to speak?
I, um, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Ken Fish, 1046 Pattry. Yes, the occupancy is the issue. As, as the comment was made about, we are in a desperate housing situation. And so, the question would be, the responsibility of the property management entity, would they be signatory or responsible to any of these issues? And how do you, how does the city manage this very real problem that might occur? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and we'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
I'll just speak up. I, I don't like this model at all. I don't think it's compatible in the location that it is. I have very serious concerns that, um, people will fall under kind of a predatory situation where they're trying to cram a bunch of children or small families into smaller units. I have very serious concerns about very condensed living spaces like this along a highway corridor with crime and trafficking, and, um, so, I'm not going to support this. I just want to get it out there. No.
Anyone else?
I'm ready to make a motion. And I'm going to wing it, so, here we go. Um, Madam Mayor, I move that City Council deny an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject properties. Pens 957, 956, 1085, from C3 Highway Business Zoning District and CHMU Commercial Highway Mixed Use to URCZD Urban Residential Conditional Zoning District, based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville Gen. H Comprehensive Plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the requested zoning to Urban Residential Conditional Zoning District and the associated proposed redevelopment align with the Gen. H Comprehensive Plan, natural land use and conservation map, and the character area description for mixed-use of, and mixed-use employment. Um, we do not find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing, and because the proposed redevelopment would have a negative impact on the transportation network. There are safety concerns regarding connectivity infrastructure that make this proposed redevelopment unreasonable for this location. Density of living units in this location is not appropriate, given the level of infrastructure in place. Yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Now, those in favor of the motion to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion to deny the quest, request, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the rezoning has been denied. Thank you for the presentation, now, Mr. Glover. We do need housing, but this was just not quite, quite what we need at this point, but thank you.
Well, I, I still stand by it. I love your city.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, next we have a zoning text amendment reforms for missing middle housing.
Yes, good evening again. Uh, as we continue to chip away at the zoning ordinance as it relates to housing and opening up opportunities and, um, creating more flexibility, uh, we have our next round uh, from our high-hanging fruit, uh, category that we're attempting to achieve here. Uh, inter, information, uh, is, you know, related to what we're trying to achieve here is the same. I would just add that, um, the type of housing that we're, that's also included in this version is related to missing middle housing. So, those are triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes, cottage courts, things of that nature. I mentioned that we have these various categories. We've been working on this over the last few months. We've achieved a lot. Everything that's in the green box has already been approved. And then, what we're going over today is this planned residential development, um, which also impacts minor planned residential developments. And then, we have on the horizon, some more fun stuff, uh, related to multifamily and our corridor, our transportation corridors and, uh, and our, um, trail corridors. So, um, stay tuned. So, getting into the, uh, proposed changes for planned residential development, uh, let's see. So, planned residential development is a conditional zoning district. So, if you have over 50 units in your development, it's considered a major planned residential development. If you have under 50 units and you're utilizing these standards, it's called a minor plant, planned residential development, and I'll get into the specifics of that as we go forward. The permitted uses is the first thing we're, uh, addressing here. And the big change here is the, the proposal to eliminate just regular multifamily residential dwellings as a use. Uh, we are backfilling that, uh, with some smaller-scale, uh, multifamily uses, three-family, triplexes, four-family, quadplexes. Uh, and then also, and so, that's a big change. The rationale for that, um, the PRD zoning district has been used for decades for a lot of different developments in the City of Hendersonville, um, ranging from single-family all the way to very large-scale multifamily. It is difficult to have a zoning district that can function effectively for that broader range of scale and development. And so, what we're attempting to do here is to tailor this zoning district to our mixed housing-type, single-family, uh, missing-middle, um, zoning district. And for multifamily, which a big distinction between single-family to four-family is that under North Carolina state law, you cannot apply architectural design standards to those, uh, those units. But, you get above more than four units in a building, and, uh, you go into a, a different category of the residential building code, um, which, where you can have design standards. And so, we want to put our multifamily residential dwelling uses in and focus those developments in our mixed-use zoning districts, um, which are, you know, Greenville Highway Mixed Use, uh, Central, uh, Mixed Used, uh, Commercial Highway Mixed Use, those mixed-use districts, as well as urban residential and urban village. So, we're going to focus our multifamily in those zoning districts and let this be more tailored and focused, uh, to smaller mixed housing types. As the image, uh, illustrates, there is, uh, a range of different housing types that are all compatible within that image, and that's kind of what we're going for. We've also included some neighborhood-scale commercial uses, um, so that there's opportunities for a mix, uh, a mix of uses in close proximity to where people live. The next component is, uh, to address, um, the site requirements. We're kind of moving in a different direction from the current language in that we're referencing, making reference to our, um, comprehensive plan and, uh, suggesting that, uh, the densities that are, uh, that, A, that the properties that are used, um, for this zoning district are found within our three residential, um, character areas that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, and that based on that character area, there's a suggested density. We did not want to make it a requirement, um, uh, because we didn't want to necessarily muddy the waters too much between the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. But, in the same vein as the comprehensive plan, which is a guide, we've, we're using that same kind of guiding language, uh, here. Uh, and again, this would apply to the major PRD, not the minor PRD. Uh, the density cap, uh, is a maximum of 10 units per acre, with, in addition to the, the guidance, um, the, uh, various character areas. That is also the max density, um, under the current PRD, but the current PRD also has these density bonuses, as you may recall, if you've done one of those before. But, with the elimination of, uh, multifamily, those density bonuses are no longer needed. So, we are proposing to eliminate that language. The next, uh, section is, we're, we're addressing open space and the maximum footprint, uh, standards with, again, with the reduction of multifamily. That, those standards had to be modified in order to, um, otherwise, the open space and footprint requirements would be more restrictive than our density requirements. And so, they'd be kind of at odds with each other. So, we've, uh, we're, we're, we're moving that lever slightly. But, if you, uh, percent for our footprint, 40% for the open space, and then that leaves 20% for things like driveways and streets, sidewalks. The, the next change that's on the, the lower half here, related to dimensional standards, the current setup is that it has this very flowy paragraph language about where you can locate your buildings, um, and all these different, uh, criteria, if this, then this. And so, we decided to just go with a good old-fashioned table, just like the rest of our zoning district. So, so, we've cleaned that up and made it, um, a, a little easier and clearer to, uh, to go about. And these, there are some slight changes here from the, um, the current setback requirements. Um, nothing, nothing too drastic, though. Uh, it already allowed for, uh, similar types of arrangements. I think the biggest change is that there was an exterior, a 30-foot setback from all exterior property lines, and we've reduced that down, um, and it would be 20 feet. Uh, so, that, that gives a little more wiggle room and, uh, flexibility of, uh, use of the land. Uh, this just states that you can subdivide a, a PRD, and we left it very simple. The next one related to circulation access, again, very lengthy paragraphs. Um, we, we're addressing that somewhat, uh, but more importantly, some of the information that's provided in our current language is really at odds, uh, specifically with, um, what our comprehensive plan goals are, as well as what some of our other zoning districts, uh, require as it relates to interconnectivity, um, and, and those, those goals as it relates to circulation. And so, what we've done is pulled in language from some of our other zoning districts that had, um, you know, already articulated, uh, some of these, some of these standards as it relates to circulation. And so, we have more consistency across our zoning ordinance, and we have more consistency with our comprehensive plan, with the language that we're proposing. The image there just, uh, is kind of a quick illustration of, uh, the goals of interconnectivity uh, as it relates to, uh, efficient movement. Uh, a, all this red is, uh, because we're, again, eliminating the multifamily, so we don't need the building height, um, uh, exemption. Uh, we also do not need standards, different standards related to buffering and screening and landscaping. We already have Article 15, which outlines all those standards. And then, off-street parking, that's found in Article 6. We don't need it here as well. So, we're proposing to scrap all of that. Um, there are some proposals for, uh, site design. Uh, these are more, uh, guiding and suggestive in terms of, uh, creating that walkable design and greating the street and having a good interface between the private realm and the public realm. Uh, but, there's nothing too heavy-handed in here, um, but it is, uh, reflective of, uh, the goals and guiding principles in the comprehensive plan. So, this brings us to minor PRD, uh, again, 50 units or less. Minor PRD is a permitted use in all of our residential zoning districts, as well as, um, some of our, some of our commercial zoning districts as well. Each zoning district has, um, a, an, an assigned density that's allowed. So, dwelling units per acre that are allowed in a corresponding zoning district. The first thing we did was take a look at, you know, transferring, uh, the minimum lot size for the zoning district and converting that into density. So, for example, R40, that's 40,000 square foot minimum lot size, that's roughly one acre, and then we just added one. So, that's, that's how we went about this. So, we went through, we made the conversion, and we added one. Most of these went up a slight increase in density, very slight. Uh, some of them were already, um, a little bit on the high side and, or in, in the correct position. Um, so, so, no change was needed. So, that sets, if you want to do a minor planned residential development in R15, you have some amount of land available. Your, the units, the number of units you can put on that land are going to be dictated by, um, this allotment that's outlined under this section. Now, you can keep in mind that, uh, last month, the half, uh, the half-unit provision, so, units that are 1,200 square feet or less count as half a unit when you're, uh, calculating your density. I've got some, you know, scenarios here, um, if you, if you're interested in, you know, if you have this-sized lot and, uh, you were in this zoning district, what you could build, if you're interested, um, but I'll wait and see if you have any questions about that. That's, that's a, that's a tweak. The big change here, the, the most, um, uh, potentially impactful change- The big change here, the most potentially impactful change would be that, to date, the interpretation has been that the, what is allowed in a minor PRD is not based on the allowed uses under PRD, it's based on the allowed uses under the underlying zoning district, which essentially meant that you could only do single-family or single-family attached. What we, the way we've written this is that it says that, that under a minor PRD, you can do any of the residential uses that are listed under PRD. So if you go back to the very beginning, we had the list of permitted uses. You had some non-residential, you had some commercial uses, those would not be permitted, but any of the residential uses would be permitted. So what that does is introduces opportunities for triplex, you know, single-family and two-family already allowed within all of our residential and commercial areas, but this would introduce potential opportunities for triplexes and quadplexes. I will just note that I don't expect a proliferation of this. I don't expect that it will rapidly densify or drastically change any of our existing communities. If you do the math, you do the numbers, there's just not going to be that many opportunities to have triplexes and quadplexes with the density that, because we've only tweaked the density. But it is now a use that is on the books that can, you know, in certain circumstances, someone may be able to choose to do that. They also have these other choices we've created, which are, you know, the reduced pole flag lot, or the small lot. They could do townhomes. So we've just created a, this is just another option, another layer for someone who's considering development, a smaller-scale developer, to evaluate their options, figure out which works best for them, which one's the most compatible with the neighborhood, that type of thing. Also, we'll mention that there are triplexes and quadplexes, you know, already in existence in a lot of our existing neighborhoods. So I don't see any of this as a, as that drastic of a change from what exists, but it is, it is different than the way that zoning ordinance has been to date, at least since the mid-1990s, when there was a big pushback on multifamily in the city. Let's see. The, I mentioned about, you know, tailoring certain zoning districts for multifamily and this one being for that mixed housing type. So to achieve that, we also need to look at our planned commercial development and our planned institutional development. Those are both CZD zoning districts, and we're proposing to eliminate multifamily from those as well. So again, kind of pointing larger-scale multifamily to specific zoning districts. All of this has to be reflected in our table of uses in the zoning ordinance, so that's here. And then there's some language about the circulation and access. We needed some language to talk about this in our subdivision ordinance as well. There's some language in there that requires that all streets be public streets, and then there may be some cases where you may have a public street, but you want to provide a private alley that allows for some of these other design considerations. So we've opened that up a little bit in the subdivision ordinance. Just like to highlight that the, you know, we're really targeting these in our residential zoning districts. And if you combine that, you know, look at the land areas, almost 70% of the city is in these, you know, R40 through R6 zoning districts with the lion's share in R15. So you want to think about where your impacts are going to be. Similarly, the, the character areas, for residential character areas from the Gen H plan cover 55% of the study area, which was larger than our jurisdiction. The excerpts from the character areas, you know, they talk about being residential in character. The mixed housing type is really introduced under multi-generational living, and that is one of the larger, 23% of the area is that MGL area, so pretty good chunk. Continuing on with comprehensive plan consistency, staff surprisingly found this to be very consistent with our Gen H comprehensive plan. I also want to acknowledge the land supply map, because that, you all recall during that comprehensive plan adoption, we took a really close look at the land supply. This is, this is a way that we can, you know, better utilize, acknowledge that we have this land supply and better utilize that land through changes like this. And most of that land supply was evaluated to be, and found to be most suitable for residential development. So this very much lines up with the process that we've been working towards. The planning board reviewed these proposals and supported the efforts to increase the flexibility within the zoning ordinance. Looking at compatibility, staff reviewed the provisions as they related to the goals and guiding principles, and it was consistent across the very, across the board and really very much compatible with the provisions for providing a mix of housing types and development standards that promote pedestrian-friendly design, compatible site and building design, all of those goals and guiding principles. Just taking a quick look at some of those, we talk about compact development, we talk about missing middle housing specifically, desirable and affordable housing. In bold at the bottom, this is coming straight from the Gen H plan, it highlights all of the types of units that we're trying to accommodate in this text amendment, except for live-work units, that one's not specifically called out, that we're looking at that for future rounds. And then, you know, there's a whole spread on missing middle housing in our comprehensive plan, and I just wanted to highlight that further and just acknowledge that these are the, you know, between your single-family and your large-scale apartments. The missing middle is something that we have not been producing in this country. It was something that pre-World War II. It was, it was built and very common, and now it's, you know, they're pretty desirable places to live, but there's not many of them. So we want to create those opportunities. And there's a great, you know, short but compelling rationale for it in our comprehensive Looking at the third criteria for the text amendment, this again is a response to the need for additional attainable housing in the city and increasing the housing supply. And that is also why it's in the public interest, as well as expanded utilization of existing land provides benefits to those that are in need of housing. For public facilities, staff finds that the proposal allows for greater utilization of existing infrastructure, very critical for, for running a city to be able to utilize that existing infrastructure. Effect on natural environment, there is a potential for loss of mature trees as you have new development. There is greater flexibility in this, in these standards than in the current iteration. And then there's also that retaining open space requirements as well. And so the planning board supported this proposal. They saw it a couple of times, but at their last meeting, they recommended the comprehensive plan statement and the rationale for approval on the screen, and then staff has draft rationale for denial. And I'll take any questions here.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes? This public hearing, no one here signed up. Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, one handed raise.
Okay.
Ken Fitch, you are unmuted.
Ken Fitch, and according to Patton Street, I have spoken previously at these hearings to the issues of compatibility, privacy, and the impacts on adjacent existing properties from the changes in setbacks, as well as additional generated traffic and the lost trees. The new amendment does generate a model for, a welcome for variety of housing types. It's shown in the illustration and the photos, although our experience has been proliferation of a banal saneness of architectural style that one of our council members has noted in the past. The amendment just mentioned home occupations, including some in-home uses such as beauty shops that have been a common traditional use in the city and the county for generations. Perhaps, but perhaps there's a lack of specificity here, as it might generate issues of compatibility, including impacts of traffic and parking. In addition to the cited examples, such as, that category might include attorneys, tact repairers, therapists, consultants, caterers, counselors, music instruction, yoga, but also carpentry, and auto repair, tattoo artists, independent pharmaceutical makers, or hermologists provide botanicals, herbal remedies, plant-based substances of many kinds. Indeed, one does recall some time back, residential meth labs that thrive by a faulty robot. Some thought to uses and specifications may be necessary, along with consideration of noise and debris impacts, as well as the number of vehicles serving such home occupation uses.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone else?
No, Madam Mayor.
Was that public hearing, council, discussion, or a motion?
Matt Manley and staff, what a great job doing all this stuff. You're doing exactly what we asked to do, and streamlining the processes and helping to create infill development, which are all goals of the city. And thank you for all your hard work, because I know that this was, there are a lot of words.
So many words.
So many words.
Try to get rid of a lot.
I appreciate the elimination of the words. Thank you.
Oh, I'm done right now. Someone else can make one.
All right. Madam Mayor, I'm U.S. City Council, adopted ordinance amending the official city of Hendersonville zoning ordinance, Article IV, establishment of districts, and Article V, zoning district classifications, and to amend the city of Hendersonville subdivision ordinance, Section 4.03 Streets, as presented by staff, based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville Gen H comprehensive plan, based on the information in the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the proposed text amendment aligns with the Gen H 2045 comp plan, future land use and conservation map, and the character area descriptions. We find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the following information. The proposed amendment creates an opportunity to adjust the need for additional gentle density, missing middle housing. The proposed amendment establishes standards to encourage walkable neighborhoods, and the proposed amendment complements existing provisions to incentivize the construction of smaller, more affordable dwellings, or AKA starter homes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Now, those in favor of the zoning text amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and another step toward more affordable housing. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have an annexation, public hearing for Upward Road.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. This is a satellite annexation petition. On May 1st, City Council accepted the certificate of sufficiency for this petition. The annexation was submitted by Robert Quaterbaum, the manager of Quaterbaum Properties FLLC. The annexation application is for one parcel, which is approximately 2.65 acres, and the map on the left shows you the distance from the corporate city limits to this proposed property from both the city of Hendersonville and also the Village of Flat Rock. I have a motion for approval, a motion for denial, and we also have the annexation plat. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
And I believe there was somebody from the, yeah, so there's also somebody here from the applicant side, and I think they've also.
Yes, if they would like to make a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Appreciate you guys having us here tonight. Just to introduce kind of our team, my name is Wes Hall. I work for Sheets. I am entitlement manager with them. This is Sean Poole. He is senior site selector with Sheets, and our civil engineer, Devin Staley. You know, our main reason for being here tonight is for the annexation, in order to be able to connect public sewer. We are, oh, I've got to figure out how to use this here. There we go. Like Mr. Morris said, this is the site. It is at the southwest corner of Hollinger Road and Upward Road. In coordination with Mr. Quaterbaum, we have already subdivided through Henderson County. This is just a zoomed-in picture of it. In looking at compatibility and consistency with the Gen H plan, this is designated as future use of mixed-use commercial. We feel like we would be in very good compliance with that and able to meet those design standards that go along with that area. I'll turn it over to Sean to give you a little bit of background on Sheets.
Yeah, so thanks for having us. You know, we wanted to take the opportunity to not only talk about why we're here, but who we are as a company. So the next slide, so I'm a senior site selector, so I cover all of North Carolina for new stores within the state. I've worked with the Sheets family for 19 years, so going on 20 years. It's family-owned and operated, so it started in 1952 with Bob Sheets, and there's five total brothers. So when you see the Sheets Brothers Coffee, Sheets Brothers Kitchen, this is, you know, kind of speaks to the founding family members. But everyone that's in the slide there, that's, you know, we're on our third generation that's operating in some function of the organization. So, you know, why this is important to us, and I've lived this for 20 years, and I started in a store, is, you know, their name's on the canopy. So there's a lot of pride, you know, it is the Sheets family. Do we put the slide in here just to kind of speak to North Carolina, since that's what, you know, and Wes has entitlement across the state as well? You know, we have 130 locations in total in North Carolina. We, in the kind of bottom, for the left corner, that represents 775 locations across our footprint. With our most recent state being Michigan, we have one store that just opened within the last, you know, six to nine months. Within this market, we have one store open, the store 831 for us in the town of Fletcher off Naples and Highway 25. Hopefully, everyone's at least had a good experience and had a chance to visit there. This will be our first store in Hendersonville, and our focus is always really to kind of deliver on our mission, vision, and purpose statement, which is to really take care of the people that not only work for us, but are within the communities that we serve. And the family, it starts at the top. So that's, you know, kind of where we are. Here's some renderings of the product that we, we bring. So obviously, with the zoning, you know, for us to design this store, we need to know exactly the specifications. So these are renderings of the model that we'll bring here. So this is, unlike Naples, it will not have high-flow diesel. This is a very prototypical store that we'll bring with a drive-through, car wash is our, is our goal. These are some just elevations, kind of show you the front side of the building, and then, you know, the back kind of side door of what we'll have here. So we wanted to share that with you, and I speak to, as everyone's aware, as construction costs have gone up, the families never really peeled back on design aesthetics. They want quality products in the communities they operate. And here's our canopy. This shows five. We would, we're proposing six. We call them dives, that you can, you know, slide in and slide out. So accolades and community support. So we're very proud of, you know, what we've done as a company. You know, we've been voted best places to work over the last 20 years. We're voted top company to work for, best for families, ranked top for women to work in convenience. And then it shows some of our legacy partnerships. So Sheets for the Kids. And for every store that we operate, each store supports sixteen children in the local community for Christmas, a holiday. We partner, whether it's Boys and Girls Club or Salvation Army to, um, you know, identify, there's the application process. But then they have a wish list, and we work with their family to give them something that they may not have had that year. And we do that every year. Last year, we raised two million in twenty twenty-four for that charity loan. Make-A-Wish, you know, in our operating markets, we, you know, support children that are in that program to make their wishes come true. Special Olympics is a legacy partnership. Every store that we open, we support with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar donation directly to them. And then we have coin boxes in every store that we make annual donations to. And our newest one is Feeding America. And it's really for us, just being a corporate, good corporate citizen, and partner by ensuring that, you know, food, before it ends its real shelf life, that we get it into the hands of the community to, you know, serve those in need. So every store will partner with, uh, an organization within the Feeding America network to be able to help the communities we serve. So, uh, we just wanted to kind of tell you a little bit about us and show up. And we are all happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
Madam clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes? Okay, no one has signed up here. Is there anyone online seeking recognition?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll close that public hearing. Counsel? Discussion? Or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council adopt an ordinance of the city of Hendersonville to annex non-contiguous property owned by Robert H. Quattlebaum, manager of Quattlebaum Properties FLLC, identified as PIN nine five eight eight dash four zero dash seven three two five. Finding that the standards established by the North Carolina General Statute one sixty A dash fifty eight point one have been satisfied, and that the annexation is in the best interest of the city.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the annexation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the annexation, say no. Ayes have it. Motion carries, and it is annexed. And again, we thank you for the presentation and look forward to having a, um, good relationship between the Sheets family and our Hendersonville nonprofit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to take a break now? Okay, all right, we'll take a five-minute break. Just a sec.
Let's get call meeting back to order. Public hearing, a rezoning, a conditional rezoning district, Ronan at Hendersonville.
Just do it for memory.
I'm just noticing how unflattering that angle is on the back of my head. That's tough. Oh, man.
We can't see your face anyway.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, you're back with the light, yeah.
That was just my bad vision, so I'm glad to hear it's on.
That's why I pulled it up on here too, because I can't read.
So we have a conditional rezoning petition before you all tonight. The subject property is made up of one parcel and is located on South Allen Road and Upper Crossing Drive. The applicant is Gray Cliff Capital Development LLC. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to CHMU CZD. Subject property is approximately seventeen point one three acres, and they're proposing to construct a one hundred ninety-two unit multifamily development and its associated accessory buildings. The Gen H comprehensive plan designates the subject parcel as mixed-use commercial. The NCM for this project occurred on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and there were four residents in total in attendance. We received two pre- submitted comments for that meeting. The main topics discussed during that meeting, including the need to conserve the many trees, is feasible, whether the stormwater detention location would affect tree preservation, the absence of phase two during the initial discussions of phase one of the water leaf development, the affordability of the units, conducting a wildlife study, and also concerns regarding the loss of additional agricultural land. So on the screen are some site photos. So the top left is the view of the strip of land between Water Leaf Phase One and the landings of Flat Rock. Top right is the typical view of the subject property. Bottom left is a view of mature growth of trees close to the stream along the northwest corner. And the bottom right is a view of the Water Leaf Phase One from the approximate location of the Ronan entrance. So on September second, twenty twenty-one, City Council annexed this parcel and the Water Leaf and Flat Rock parcel. At the time, both of those parcels were combined into one thirty-two acre parcel. On January sixth, twenty twenty-two, City Council zoned this property CHMU. The applicant and owners originally petitioned for C three, but however, became agreeable to CHMU after they received a recommend for denial of C three from the planning board. So moving into this specific project, on the screen is the proposed site plan and building renderings for this development. The development is proposing eight apartment buildings. They're each approximately twenty-seven thousand three hundred forty square feet. It does include a clubhouse, five garages, and a cabana. The proposed height of the apartment buildings are a little bit over thirty-nine feet and proposed at three stories. CHMU allows for four stories for multifamily buildings. The building slash site is required to meet all the building and design requirements of commercial highway mixed-use developments, and this includes but not limited to building materials, building offsets, building projections, building orientation, and scale. All buildings on site meet these design requirements, including the garages. So the site plan shows two access points onto the site, both of which are coming from Upper Crossing Drive. All buildings on the site, including the non-residential buildings, are required to have a sprinkler system due to the two accesses into development not meeting the minimum separation requirements of Appendix D of the fire code. The site plan proposes cross-access easement through the summit at Hendersonville or Water Leaf Phase One. This easement would allow permanent access from the Ronan development to South Allen Road. Sidewalks are being provided along the property frontage of Upper Crossing Drive and South Allen Road. The developer, all site lighting will be required to conform to the city's standards. The development requires two hundred and four parking spaces, and the site plan shows three hundred and twenty-four spaces. According to the latest USGS maps, there's a northwestern portion of the subject property. There is a Blue Line stream, which does require the thirty-foot stream buffer and transitional area. A wetland and stream delineation conducted by Blue Line Environmental Consultants LLC shows a wetland. On the eastern portion of the subject property, it also shows wetlands on the western pole side as well. Let's see, the most recent USGS maps also show a Blue Line stream on the southwestern portion of the property. However, the stream was not identified during the stream and wetland delineation report. The U.S. Army Corps have also not confirmed the findings of that report. The developer is requesting a condition that requires the Army Corps confirm the report after or during final site plan approval, which would occur after the rezoning. Should the Army Corps confirm that a stream is shown on that portion of the property, then our buffer and transitional areas would apply. The site will be required to provide vehicular use landscaping, open space plantings, common space plantings, street trees. And these landscaping, these new landscaping requirements are being met through new plantings and also the use of tree credits. The site plan, the site currently has one hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and thirty-one square feet of tree canopy, which is roughly fifteen percent of the site. The development is proposing to retain thirty percent of that canopy, so they would not be required to do any Tier Two plantings. A traffic impact analysis was submitted for this project in accordance with a scope approved by the city and NC DOT. The traffic impact analysis for the development was submitted in twenty twenty-four, and our third-party transportation consultant, Kimberly Horn, did review that and stated, based on the technical review of the TIA, as submitted, the analysis and recommendation as stated are acceptable and no revisions are required. The TIA shows that this development would add thirteen hundred and six daily trips, eighty-two AM peak hour trips, and a hundred and three PM peak hour trips. There's a total of five intersection studies part of this TIA. So the city, or the condition on the screen was proposed by city staff but not agreed to by the developer. This condition was presented to the planning board, and they did not include it in the recommendation. The condition revolved around providing additional connectivity to the development. City staff asked the developer to provide this roadway connection between the existing Upper Crossing stubout and South Allen Road. This roadway connection was shown on previous plans, on previous reviews. Given that the roadway had been shown previously and discussed, the city anticipated that this connection would be included with the development of this property when it was developed. The roadway connection was supported by CHMU and also the interconnectivity goals of Gen H, which kind of showed right there, that's from Gen H. However, staff is no longer proposing this condition. We have gotten some advice from our legal team, and we have since withdrawn this proposed condition. So it's off the table. Still on the table, however, is a different condition, which has been agreed to by the developer. So this was basically a staff-proposed counter to our own condition. The planning board did recommend this as part of their recommendation to City Council. So this staff believe that even if a roadway connection is not pursued, that the developer should record an easement through Water Leaf Phase One that would give permanent access from the Ronan to South Allen Road, because this was the route depicted in the TIA. So moving into developer-proposed conditions, so these are currently shown on your plans and have, of course, been agreed to by the developer. The first is request a condition to remove the connectivity stubout requirement. Since most of the, or since all of the surrounding area is new construction, the likelihood of those stubouts being reciprocated is probably very low at this point. So they're asking for that to be removed. Also, that the boundary survey and the Army Corps confirmation be added to the final site plan approval process. And lastly, they're asking for a condition to have parking between the public roadway, which is I twenty-six, and their buildings. The way CHMU is written, parking is supposed to be behind buildings and not between buildings and the roadway. So this is kind of a special circumstance, and they're asking for a condition for that. So the subject property is designated as mixed-use commercial. This designation follows the Upper Road frontage corridor, starting at Upper Road and South Allen Road. It continues east to the edge of the map's boundary. Parcels to the northwest are designated as institutional, a designation associated with Elizabeth Lee House or Elizabeth House and Blue Ridge Community College. The parcels directly across I twenty-six from the subject property designated as industrial, a designation associated with the Blue Ridge Community or Blue Ridge Commerce Center. Open space conservation is also found nearby, and it follows the Batford Creek and its associated floodplains. The subject property was not listed on the land suitability map or supply map. The subject property is within the focus intensity node of I twenty-six interchange, and the character description is generally consistent, and the zoning crosswalk is consistent. The subject property has a residual parcel remaining after the landings of Flat Rock and Water Leaf Phase One subdivided from their parent tract. The surrounding area includes a mix of city and Henderson County zoning. The subject property is currently, or the proposed development follows a design similar to that of the adjacent properties. If approved and constructed, the development would complete the build-out of the overall parent parcel for these three developments. The development places residents within close distance to retail, dining, and baking amenities. Subject property is currently annexed and zoned commercial highway mixed-use. The project aligns with the underlying zoning and design requirements for this district, and is required to only get a C ZD due to the number of units proposed. According to the twenty twenty-four housing needs assessment, Henderson County requires an estimated ten thousand new housing units over the next five years. Of these, at least two thousand units are needed in the city of Hendersonville for low and moderate income households. Over the last five years, the city of Hendersonville has approved roughly nineteen hundred and thirty-eight multifamily units. If this project was approved, that would be around two thousand one hundred and thirty units. However, of all of all those units, only eighteen hundred and twenty-five are currently active. And additionally, only a hundred and sixty-three of those approved are for people making thirty to eighty percent AMI. The site will be served with city water and sewer, and the whole property was annexed, as I mentioned previously. So there are no parts of, there's no floodplains on this site. There are some streams and also some wetlands. And as I mentioned, they're saving thirty percent of the existing tree canopy. So the planning board voted seven to one, had their meeting on May eighth, to recommend approval of this project. They did not recommend, or they did recommend the removal of two proposed developer conditions that were presented to them. The first was to remove the requirement of the South Allen frontage sidewalk, and the second was to allow for a smaller caliper common space tree. Both of these conditions have been removed by the developer post-planning board meeting, and are no longer associated with this project. On the screen is the planning board's comprehensive plan consistency statement. They did find the project consistent with the comprehensive plan. This was the planning board's approval, or reasonless for approval. I have a draft reasonless for denial, and I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you. Would the Alphaca like to make a statement?
Good evening. I'm Jay Lee, representing the development team from Gray Cliff Capital Partners. We're based just down the mountain in Greenville, South Carolina. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you to Tyler and the planning staff for the presentation on our project. I just want to give a quick summary of what we're trying to bring to the community and which members of the community we would be serving here. Tyler touched on the twenty twenty-four housing needs assessment, which, based on projects approved since the study was done, there's still about eight thousand units needed by the end of twenty twenty-nine to meet the demand for housing in the area. This is the demand that we're trying to help fill with workforce housing. I think the best reflection of the type of product and members of community we're looking to serve with this project can be found right next door at the summit in Hendersonville, which Gray Cliff entitled and developed back in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. That project is two hundred and sixty-three units, and going through the list of employers of the residents at our property, I've read this down earlier. Twenty-eight percent of our residents work in the healthcare industry. Sixteen percent of the residents work in the education field. Eighteen percent, or eight percent, excuse me, are in manufacturing. Eight percent are military. Twenty-five percent are retirees, and five percent are students. There are even some city of Asheville and city of Hendersonville staff employees living there as well. Since this property opened roughly a year and a half ago, as of this morning, it is ninety-nine percent leased, which I think really speaks to the demand for this type of workforce rental housing in the area, especially the demand for rental housing for these members of the communities I just listed, which is teachers, nurses, manufacturers, and local government employees. This is the need that we're attempting to fill here. Hundred ninety-two units adjacent to our other property that we built several years ago. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
Any questions for Mr. Lee? Thank you. Madam clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, have.
We opened that public hearing. No one present has signed up. Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. One hand, Ken Fitch, you are unmuted.
Ten Fitch, ten forty-six, pass three. Well, the mystery is solved. When the adjacent developments were proposed, the disposition of this adjoining property was unknown. It was thought it might be of the development, or it might be of commercial use. So that at the time of the existing development approval, there was no definition as to the use of this site or how the site functioned, only the assumption that the road access would be provided to Allen Road, but no detailed analysis of that portion of the property. But now that we are presented with a use that is not a surprise and consistent with the adjacent use, we look at the specific conditions of the site, and that includes wetlands. And the road connection to South Allen would seem formidable, if not inadvisable, as it would cross a wetland with trees on one side and a small town on the other side. I believe it was stated that the realization of a road connection would entail major financial investment to accomplish, and one would expect a considerable environmental impact. And the appearance of yet another nearby entry of South Allen would raise concerns. The sidewalk on the edge of, or on the top of the wetland may present an issue on Allen Road, and may require necessary engineering expertise, but the sidewalk necessity is evident. This is a location, this is not a location for pedestrians to be walking on the road. One question remains. Without the direct road access to Allen Road, is another address appropriate and, in fact, necessary for this project? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone else?
No, Madam Mayor.
Close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion?
My motion.
Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopting ordinance of making the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject, I P N nine five eight eight dash two two dash eleven twenty-six from CHMU Commercial Highway Mixed Use to CHMU dash C ZD Commercial Highway Mixed Use Conditional Zoning District for the construction of a hundred and ninety-two unit multifamily development based on the master site plan and list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated five sixteen twenty-five and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. The development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained therein in the following permitted use. Permitted uses, number one, residential dwelling multifamily. Number two, accessory use and structures. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville, Gen H, twenty forty-five, according to the plan based. Based on the information from the staff analysis and the public views, every cost, the petition is consistent with the range of those guiding principles in the future land use designation of chapter four of the Gen H comprehensive plan. Number four, furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public care, and the costs. The proposed development further supports the growth of this area as a multifamily known along the I twenty-six corridor, placing residents in close proximity to I twenty-six, Blue Ridge Community College, a bank, and other commercial amenities. The proposed development adds needed housing to help address local demand.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the rezoning for Ronan at Hendersonville, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and that rezoning has been done. Thank you. Next, we have a notice of condemnation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of counsel. I'm gonna start just with entering the packet of information that Daniel is handing out to counsel. This packet includes eleven documents, and they are tabbed in your version. And so I wish to enter the city code, section twelve dash forty, which is tab one. Chief Building Inspector Crystal Litas, April fourteenth, inspection photos, which is tab two. Email correspondence from Chris Rivera regarding repair costs, tab three. The HVAC audit by Johnson Controls, tab four. HVAC service proposal by Johnson Controls, which is tab five. Code enforcement officer Kathy Braggs, June second, inspection report and photos. And Fire Marshal Nathan Young's, June second, inspection report and photos. And then also the Johnson Controls sprinkler inspection report, which is tab ten, and the Johnson Controls sprinkler repair scope of work, which is tab eleven. So these will potentially be variously referred to by staff during this presentation. So you have those in there. So what, kind of an overview of what we're doing here. The process is initiated under chapter twelve of our city code, which is the commercial property maintenance section of our code. And this chapter is authorized under General Statutes one sixty D eleven twenty-nine, which authorizes the city to have commercial property maintenance requirements. And in this case, in situations where there are conditions that are dangerous or injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, it authorizes the city to adopt and record an ordinance, which orders the code enforcement officer either to, can make repairs or cause a building to be vacated and closed, and also an ordinance recorded and properly passed with condemnation notice. So we'll talk about the ordinance itself kind of further on in the presentation, but it is under this authority, and it is this action which we are asking counsel to consider today. So the non-residential property maintenance code itself, chapter twelve, article three of the Hendersonville Code of Ordinances establishes our local standards. I just want to highlight that non-residential buildings and structures and the premises shall be kept in a condition that is not dangerous and injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. And it does highlight, and I will go through some of the ways that a code enforcement officer is directed to assess that. So chapter twelve establishes these, among other conditions, which, should they exist, represent a reason for a violation of the non-residential property maintenance code. And you can see there that we're highlighting some of the ones that were in the complaint in our notice. So that includes dilapidation, decay, and unsanitary conditions, inadequate facilities for egress, increased hazards of fire and other calamities, lack of adequate ventilation, light, heating, and unsanitary facilities, lack of proper electrical, heating, and plumbing facilities, and violations of the city fire prevention code. Those are all examples, as I noted, and are representative of violations observed during the inspections. And you'll hear a little bit more from the folks who were involved in those inspections. So the purpose of this presentation is review that process, use to document those violations, and to seek compliance with our code. So that is something that we have been doing for a period of time, and we are here to confirm that compliance has not been achieved and therefore are asserting that the public health, safety, and welfare of our community continue to be at risk due to the condition of this building, and that that needs to be addressed. I'll note that we also, Fire Marshal has been involved in this process throughout, and so our fire prevention code, specifically section one ten, as it relates to unsafe buildings, has been a part of the enforcement effort, but is not specifically related to what you were doing this evening. So kind of go over the enforcement timeline itself. This did start a little while ago. So we did an initial inspection back in February of twenty twenty-four. This was basically initiated or prompted by a notice from the water department that water at the building was to be cut off due to lack of payment of the water bill. And so there were a series, so code enforcement officer Bragg and Fire Marshal Nate Young inspected the property at that time, made a series of observations, and at the time, began to work with the property owners to try to seek compliance. So we very often will work with the property owner to pursue compliance over a period of time. That effort was engaged in for basically, you know, the period of twenty-four. In December of twenty twenty-four, following repeated failed efforts to achieve compliance via the request to remedy approach, a second inspection was conducted. Again, this time, attending with code enforcement officer Bragg was Fire Marshal, Assistant Fire Marshal John Gillespie, who inspected the property. And upon that inspection noted violations, including but not limited to unpermitted work, blocked exits, broken windows, non-functioning HVAC. So a number of things that were concerning from a commercial maintenance perspective. This led to the filing of a formal complaint by the city of Hendersonville, and in my capacity as chief code enforcement officer, the complaint compiled the conditions observed during the December fourth inspection, and which were deemed a violation of section twelve forty of the code, and included again, you know, I pointed these out earlier on, that dilapidation and decay, lack of adequate ventilation, inadequate egress, fire code violations, broken glass, inadequate electrical wiring. All of those things were observed, and administrative hearing was scheduled for January third. So, or I'm sorry, January eighth, the administrative hearing was scheduled for. So January eighth, we held the administrative hearing. The, at that meeting, at that hearing, Assistant Fire Marshal The, at that meeting, at that hearing, assistant fire marshal and code enforcement officer detailed in review with photos the condition of the property at their December fourth visit. And those observations and that review was not directly contested by the owner and the owner's rep, but they did request a continuance to allow time to effecate repairs. At the time, or at sort of at the closing of that hearing, code enforcement officer and the fire marshal agreed to visit the site, which occurred on January sixteenth. They did a comprehensive site inspection in tandem with the property owner to outline all of the things that would need to be addressed to remove the violation. So the continued hearing was held on February thirteenth. At that time, no presentation of repair work was made or completed by the owners. The owner's counsel was in attendance, but none of the property owners were at that time. So following that hearing, on February twenty-eighth, we issued an order requiring all corrections to be made. And the date for that correction was set March as March twenty-eighth. The items which needed to be addressed and presented, serious life safety concerns included, but not limited to, these are a little bit more specific, exits chained and door barricaded, egress, you know, fully eliminated in those situations, fire alarm systems that were inoperable, sprinkler system that was inoperable, fire department connection, the F T C, which was blocked, smoke detectors inoperable or missing, electrical code violations, exposed and spliced wiring, including spliced appliance cords being used for electrical wiring. The order to repair was not appealed and therefore establishes the conditions as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five of the building.
Lou, can I just note for the rest of that?
Yes.
That order to repair was included in the agenda packet. So you do have that. And as of February twenty twenty-five, so I just wanted you to be aware of that.
So on March twenty-eighth, which was the date which repairs were required under the order to repair, site inspection was conducted by our code enforcement officer and assistant fire marshal. And none of the serious life safety concerns noted in the order to repair had been addressed at that time. So following that inspection and due to the nature of the violations, the fire marshal under the authority that is established in state law issued an order to evacuate. And that was affected on April eleventh, twenty twenty-five. And this establishes that no one can occupy the building. There is an exemption for construction workers, but no one is able to occupy the building during that timeframe. And at that point, notice of this order was given to the health department, the building inspections department. The, on the day of that closure, I believe that the health department was on site. And just a little, a few days later, the building, county building inspector, chief building inspector Crystal Lida did an inspection. And I'd like to ask chief building inspector Crystal Lida to come up to speak with you about the observations that she made on the fourteenth.
Good evening. Excuse me. So we received a call from the Fire Marshal's office to conduct an inspection of this location. Inspection is limited to just the common areas only. So that's the only things we inspected on that date. Just because of the time constraints, I think we were there for over three hours just doing the common areas. So we, we don't, we haven't inspected any of the residential rooms yet. Those inspections, what we found were, if, I think someone's gonna click for me to go to a picture?
She has a PDF that says Crystal Lida's photos. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Allison's got it.
Okay. Let's go to page four.
I just have the photo, so.
Oh.
Fourth photo or?
Yep, fourth photo.
Yep.
So this is, Lou mentioned this in his report. This is panic hardware that was not installed properly in the kitchen area. Where you can see daylight through the door. Half the panic hardware is missing, so it's not going to operate properly in the event of emergency. If you'll go to seven. This is in the kitchen area. This is electrical wiring that's not terminated correctly. It's got some electrical tape on it. And so it's, it's gotta be in, what's required is it's either how it be connected to the device, or it's gotta be in an electrical box with a cover over it to make it safe. Eight. This was, this was a dishwasher duct. The dishwasher was not there. Inside that duct, there is an electrical box that is open. So it's being exposed to the weather with electrical wires in it. On eighteen. This was a plumbing issue where water is just seeping out from a floor drain. So we asked that plumber evaluate that. There was also a smell of strong gas in the kitchen area. We're not sure where it's coming from, but the smell was pretty strong. So we've asked for the mechanical contractor to evaluate that. Photo twenty-five. Is another egress that's blocked with a two by four. So you can't, wouldn't be able to get out of it at all. Twenty-six. The electrical equipment had a hole drill through it that was not done by the manufacturer. So we've asked commercial contractor to evaluate that. Thirty-seven. This is the fitness room that was not permitted. You can see in this photo, there was no permits pulled for this because there's no sprinkler heads in it. There was also any of the electrical or HVAC, there's no HVAC. So we've asked that those contractors look at that as well. Three one. This is the hot tub equipment room. Where there's a box fan that's laying on top of the ceiling, connected by a drop cord. What I'm guessing was trying to provide some sort of ventilation for this. Obviously, this is not a code compliant. So we've asked for HVAC contractor to evaluate this rim to provide the correct ventilation for the hot tub area. Number forty-two. This is the hot tub pump motor. So if you'll see, there's an electrical wire that's on the ground that's secured to the concrete. All, all pool equipment and hot tub equipment are required to be bonded in the event when someone's in the pool and any metal part that becomes energized by the electrical system. No one gets shocked or electrocuted. So the pool, that motor was not bonded. We'll go to forty-five. This is the exhaust from the hot tub heater. Where you can see daylight coming through there. We've asked that the electrical, a mechanical contractor evaluate all of the exhaust systems for the pool heater and for the hot tub heater for corrosion. Because sometimes those, over time, those have a tendency to have corrosion in them. Sorry, there's, there's like eighty-five photos, so I'm sorry. Let's see. Fifty-nine. Let's go to there. This is in the boiler room. So there's daylight in the exhaust. They're just above where identified what's going on in the photo. So the exhaust is staying within that rim and it's not being ventilated properly. Fifty-five. This is, the motor of the boiler is being supported by a milk crate, a piece of tile, and a piece PVC pipe. Page fifty-seven. This is also in the boiler room where an electrical panel was installed. There was no permit for this electrical panel. So we've asked for electrical contractor to, a licensed electrical contractor to evaluate that. Page sixty-six. This is some, this is on the roof. Throughout the roof, we, there was a lot of mechanical vents up there that were corroded like this one. So we've asked a license mechanical contractor to evaluate all the mechanical ventilation systems. Oh, wow, I can't read this picture. Let's see, this one is, which number was this one?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six. It is seventy. This is the, the yellow wire that you see in this photo. This is a vacuum cord wire. Connected to hundred and twenty volt electrical wiring. And then if you go to the next photo, supports this. The electrical wiring goes to an eighteen gauge wire, which is much smaller, that feeds a hundred and twenty to seventy-seven volt wall pack lights. And I can see in this photo that it's also covered with leaves there as well. So this was a electrical safety hazard that needed to be addressed. It's not code compliant. Go to the next photo. This was a daisy chain. It's what we call a daisy chain, where they run a drop cord to a surge protector, the surge protector is plugged into the outlet feeding the light in the ceiling. Light in the ceiling is required to be hardwired with no daisy chaining allowed. See. Seventy-four. This is the outdoor patio where there's roof felt paper and sheenels missing. Seventy. Daniel, you should have made this, this font bigger. Or maybe I'm gonna need glasses after this. This is the bonding issue in the pool equipment room. You can see the green wire that's there. It's not connected. And then the white PVC that you see there, that was a repair that was done at some point in time. So it's broken the bond. So the water in the pool and in the hot tub was not bonded at all. Page eighty-four. That is a service disconnect for a motor in the pool equipment room. Fuse disconnect, that disconnect was installed without a licensed electrician and was also not bonded as well. So I think that gives a general overview of kind of what our inspection was during that time. And like I said, it was, it was limited to just the common areas. So there would be an additional inspection that would need to be needed by us for the rooms themselves. So we feel like that because of these violations, a certificate of occupancy could not be issued until these violations have been corrected and we've inspected them. And to date, we have not received a request for an inspection. So we're waiting on that. So that's all that I have.
Questions?
Thank you for that thorough review.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Seth Swift with the environmental health department to come up. And Seth was on site, I believe, on April eleventh.
One of my staff.
One of your staff.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the health department's perspective and everything with this and give you a little bit of background. On the eleventh, we did suspend the permits that we were at the establishment. There were only three, the lodging and the pool and the spa. The restaurant had not been opened since twenty twenty-three. So it has been closed on their own. We had nothing to do with that. They just closed the restaurant. That permit no longer actually exists. It's been closed over a year. So if they ever went reopen, they'd have to get a brand new permit. But the, but the concept was, after the city called us, we went out, did a quick review of a few things. Because of the occupancy, the building had been restricted. We said, you can't have, you can't be open for anything from us. We suspended the permits immediately. Theoretically, if they get everything back together again, we could lift the suspensions, but we would probably do inspections. And our scope too, with what Crystal said, just to be aware, you know, we, we don't do electrical work. We don't do plumbing. It's strictly a more of a sanitation type thing. So to be clear, that's not on our sheets at all. We don't have the expertise in that. But we have been working with this facility for a while. And just to give you an example, they were not wearing an A on the, their inspection for the lodging, they were wearing a B when this all happened. So, any questions?
So following those inspections and at the outset of this week, on June second, our staff, code enforcement officer Kathy Bragg and Fire Marshal Nathan Young, along with assistant fire marshal John Gillespie, conducted a follow-up inspection. And I'm going to ask Kathy first to come up and review some of her observations from that inspection.
Good evening. So we'll just start out with that one. Welcome to the Cascades. There's boards laying there with nails sticking up. Obviously, that's a safety issue. I'll skip over some of these. Again, if you can go to photo six. Crystal Lida covered this one. No repairs have been made to it. It was still exposed to the outside elements. Eight. That again, that was the piping in the kitchen that was supposed to be fixed. That was not fixed at all. If you go to nine, nobody is supposed to be staying at the hotel. This hot plate was there with obvious a dirty plate food. So they're not combined with the order of evacuation. Go to twelve. This is in the spa or the hot tub area, there's obvious cords all over, electrical boxes that are just dangling. Several photos, the next ones that you can see are more of the same issues. Page eighteen, please. This is a gate, a safety gate, that goes into the pool area that is supposed to close to keep children from going in and out unsupervised, so it has to lock. It has no mechanism that keeps it closed. We'll jump into the guest rooms on page nineteen. This is a photo of one of them, it's room eleven-twenty. Obviously not guest ready. Page twenty-two. There was some kind of animal that lived in this room or was in the room, tore stuff up, and that was there. Page twenty-six. More just corrosion, debris. Twenty-eight. You can see more of the same, these are, these are other rooms, guest rooms. Let's go to thirty-three. Obviously, the faucets are missing, there's gaping hole in the shower. Thirty-four. Wear and tear, water leakage, I'm not qualified to make that assumption, but we can see there, there's an issue. The next one at thirty-five. There's a vanity missing with a hole in the wall. The next one, please, this is the laundry room. Go to thirty-seven, next one. So... This is kind of self-explanatory, but if you look towards the back, again, a vanity is missing, there's obvious drywall that is just in a pile dust. And the rest of the picture kind of says it. Thirty-nine, and you can just scroll through those slowly, those are showing all obvious leaks, mold in rooms twelve, twelve through twelve-seventeen. And that is another one. Page forty-six. That's, there's two spa rooms or hot tub rooms, obviously that is in need of repair. Fifty-one. The flooring is showing signs of needing repair. You want to go to fifty-two, please? This is room twelve-forty-nine. This room supposedly was occupied by a long-term tenant, which was a hoarder. You can see on the walls, on the floor, the smell in here is, I can't even describe it, and you guys would not want to experience it. And that has been like that since December, when it was first noticed. The door was actually taped with packing tape on the outside. There was complaints of the odor seeping out into the other guest rooms and in the hallway. So that is a picture, some pictures depicting the conditions of the majority of the one hundred guest rooms, and we were in each and every one. So do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going through that.
Ask Mr. Young if you please step up, and it should be a PDF with Nate's photos as well.
Good evening. I am blind, so. So just kind of give you a little history before we get into my photo period. So... I date back to November of twenty-three, when we started. I did an annual inspection on the building, which we wrote them up for numerous violations. We tried to work with the manager at the time, Debbie. She continued to go down the same path of, yes, we'll get these things taken care of and nothing ever happened. So rein inspections happened throughout twenty-four. In June of twenty-four, June third of twenty-four. So, a year ago. I issued a non-compliant to them for their sprinkler system being in, non-functional. The sprinkler system had water on it, but there were so many deficiencies in it that it, it needed to be corrected. Three days later, I got a work order from Debbie, signed, stating that Pi Barker was going to start doing the repairs. I then spoke to Pi Barker, who said, "We have never gotten such document." So she forged the document, sent it to me to kind of get me off the trail. So, from that point, we did seventeen visits between June of last year and June of this year. Trying to get them back into compliance. Worked with the previous manager, the new manager, the new maintenance gentleman. So, as they've gone through and told you, going back to April eleventh, we issued the notice to evacuate the building. The, some of the pictures I'm going to show you are from earlier this week, and they'll rebut some of the things that Ms. Lida took pictures of two months ago. So you'll see the condition that it's in now. Okay? So starting with page one, this is in the kitchen. This is open ceiling tiles that have just been open, they've taken the tiles out for god knows what, and nothing's ever gone back in there. As far as fire code goes, if a fire did break out, there's nothing to protect the ceiling to keep fire from rolling through the ceiling and getting throughout the building from that standpoint. You go to page three, please? Go back one. Sorry. Okay, so Ms. Lida showed you this as well. This is the backside of the deep fryer hood inside the kitchen. It was noted on numerous reports. I have a report from B Firesafe, who does their hood inspections, and it is noted on there that it needs to be corrected. So two months later, it has not been addressed. Can you go to page thirteen? Alright, so in room eleven-thirty-nine, go to the next page. This is a sprinkler head. Johnson Controls has been in the building, working for about three, four weeks, replacing sprinkler heads. They are, in my opinion, about ninety percent done with correcting the sprinkler issues. However, the last ten percent are some big things. So, one of those is a condition like this. So this is a flush mount sprinkler head that is recessed into the ceiling. The black part that you see there is a gap that is around the sprinkler head, which could let smoke and fire get up into the ceiling cavity. The issue that they ran into where they had to go through and replace heads like this was, they had caulked them all to the ceiling and painted them, which rendered it useless. It changes the, the temperature, which it would activate, or probably not. So in the event of a fire, the sprinkler heads that were there probably wouldn't have saved anyone, property or alive. So, this is pretty much in about ninety-five percent of the rooms. This situation exists today after the corrections. So they still need to go back and they need to fix these and get them tighter to the ceiling. If you could go, go two more slides. I'm sorry, go back. Alright, so this is their electrical room. Electrical rooms are not used for storage, especially with combustibles. So they have a plethora of things inside the electrical room that need to get out of there. One of which is the charcoal lighter fluid that's sitting on top of the cabinet. If you can go to... Go to slide twenty-five. Yes, alright, so this is eleven-twenty-six, go to the next slide. Alright, so this condition is throughout the building. The smoke detectors have either been removed or have been replaced, and they don't have any power. So as you walk into the building, all you hear is the beep of a smoke detector. You hear, some of them that have been replaced are now saying low battery. So this condition exists in pretty much every room. That sprinkler head right there has been replaced, if you go to the next picture. There are gaps and holes around the sprinkler head that need to be fixed, where they've, they've torn out the wall. And we've also found that there's probably half a dozen heads within the building that are new, brand-new replaced, that are leaking and just dripping and running water all over the place.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have work orders that seem like a professional has been working on these, or?
I do, and I'll, I'll get to that in just a minute, yes, ma'am. Can you go to page forty-five? So this is a condition that's in the hallway, outside of the boiler room, where they've taken the ceiling tiles out to do some work. And just have not put anything back. So again, the situation exists where if something was to happen, fire gets up in there, it can run the ceiling, and there's no protection. Go to the next one. More of that condition, and then go to the next. You could go to, let's say, page seventy. Seven-zero. Sorry.
Mr. Finch did speak about the amazing Alison Justice there.
How does she do what she does?
Go, go back two slides, please. There you go, alright. So this exists on the outside of the building. These are open wires that are randomly thrown out into the air. I don't have a picture over here, but on the flip side of that, the rest of the fluorescent light fixture is laid up over the other side of the roof with all the wires exposed to the open air laying, laying on top of the roof. Alright, go to the next picture. So, Ms. Lida had a picture of this. This egress path right here, both doors are supposed to have panic hardware on it. They are both part of the egress path to get out of the banquet room. Only one of the doors has what you would consider to be panic hardware. The other one, as you can see, top and bottom have throw bolts. So, in the event of an emergency, if a hundred people need to get out of that room and they needed all, all of that width to get out, they are limited to the one door, if it'll open. And the panic hardware on that door is not functioning properly to get out. Let's go... Go to page seventy-five. Okay, so this exists in the, the hot tub equipment room. The spot on the right-hand side that you're looking at is water damage and mold. The spot on this, the left-hand side is where they've gone in and put in a sprinkler head in that room and just completely destroyed the drywall. Go back one slide, please. This picture is today's current status of where the box fan used to be. So, they've removed the box fan, and now we just have a gaping hole. And to give you an idea, that hole opens up into the lobby. So any exhaust that's happening inside of that room is just exhausting into the lobby at this point in time. And none of the, none of the equipment in there has been running, obviously, but again, to the point of, it's been almost two months and none of these conditions have been resolved. Go to page... Page ninety-six. Sorry. So, this is an air conditioner that is functioning, sitting on the floor, inside the room, running, condensating all over the floor. So as you walk into the room, the carpet's completely saturated, and again, this is an active running unit, just not in its case, sitting on the floor. If you could go to page... Don't kill me. One-third.
Is this one ninety-four?
Ish, yes. That one, sorry, go back two. This is in a guest bathroom inside of one of the rooms. These are exposed wires that are just randomly stuck up out of the ceiling. There's no wire nuts on it, I do not know if there was electricity to it or not. But this condition does exist in probably half a dozen of the rooms on the second floor. The lights have just been removed and the wires are just sticking out. You could go to page one-thirty-five. Keep going. Alright, so this is in the boiler room. This is open, electrical, that is, the cover has been removed and never been replaced. Go to the next photo. So again, Ms. Lida showed you this photo back in April. This still exists, and they are actively running the boilers, so this is just exhausting into the boiler room. Uh, you could go to one forty-three, please. Yes. Uh, this is in a guest room. This is a propane tank inside the building that is hooked up to a heater. I'm not sure why this condition exists, but the propane tank and the heater need to be removed immediately. I asked the manager to remove it while we were standing there three times, and when we left, it was still in there. Alright, if you could go to one fifty-seven. I promise I'm gonna wrap this up here in a minute. So this is the fire alarm panel. The fire alarm panel is actively in trouble. Um, it does not dial out. It does not report. Half the devices in the building that are there are not in this panel. So I don't know where they go to. We pulled a pulse station that did absolutely nothing. So as of today, I still have not issued a permit for the fire alarm. We received plans that were insufficient. Scope of work that was provided to me by Johnson Controls said on the scope of work that it did not meet the code. So we returned the plans to them and advised them that they would give us a full set of engineered plans that would meet code. Um, that has been over a month and a half, and I have not received anything. Go to, go over two s- two slides, please. Uh, this is in electrical room inside the back manager's office. Again, we've got a rat's nest of wires just hanging out of the ceiling and an open ceiling where if a fire were to break out, anything could happen, and it would run the ceiling and just go through the building. Uh, next slide, please. This is another electrical room, uh, with a open ceiling. That's kind of it for my pictures. Thank you, Alison. So the sprinkler inspection. So we received a sprinkler inspection report from Johnson Controls. We did not solicit the report. Johnson Controls went out there to do an inspection to kind of get a baseline for where they were at. They provided us with that report. Yeah, I believe it's in your packet. Um, that report notes, I want to say about sixteen different deficiencies, ranging from minor to major. Um, one of the major things on there, because they have enhanced the sprinkler system over the years and added heads and done different things, it needs a new hydraulic cow plate, which has to be part of this inspection for it to pass. At this time, Johnson Controls, I talked to them yesterday, they have not been, um, they have not been told to go back in, and they haven't signed any work orders or have received any work orders to go back in and finish the sprinkler repairs. The the inspection that we did, um, again, we noted multiple things. One of the things that we noted was the manager of the building, um, is, was actively living in the building at the time we went on Monday. Um, he was actively cooking in the kitchen when we went on Monday. And he has been advised that he will get trespassed if we catch him actively living in the building from this point forward. Um, this has been an issue since the day that we uh, gave the notice of evacuation. We've been back there a handful of times to try and get people removed from the building. Um, one of the other things is the building in the back. So the building in the back, which is kind of, they consider it to be the annex. Uh, that building is unsecured. Um, we, we and the police department have run, uh, the unhoused out there quite frequently. Um, the day that we issued the evacuation order, they secured the building. We were there on Monday, and the back door is wide open, and anybody can walk in, and if there's power in the building, there's water in the building. Um, that building has never had a certificate of occupancy. The building was permitted. It went through rough-in inspections, and that was where it laid. So historically, that building should never have been occupied, period. Um, I have received conversation, and I believe Mr. Holloway has as well, from Chris Rivera, where he had asked to board up the building, which we all said, please do. And that was well over a month ago, and it still hasn't been done yet. So, you know, the building needs to be secured. It needs to be, you know, uh, power removed, any utilities removed, to the point where nobody can get in there and live inside the building. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
So, um, based on, uh, the information presented, based on the continuing existence of a variety of violations of our commercial maintenance code, um, you have a draft ordinance, um, which, uh, we feel, uh, and via the presentation that we shared today, that the violations that have been identified in the order remain, they still exist. And we are therefore asking city council to adopt an ordinance that recognizes that. Uh, as the date of the ordinance, those repairs have not been made. Um, and importantly, the totality of the circumstances, uh, that are shown, uh, represent a building that is unsafe and unfit for human habitation. And the conditions therein jeopardize the health and safety of any occupants or members of the general public if permitted to enter. Um, the order, uh, ordinance establishes that the building is ordered closed, vacated, and condemned, and that the enforcement officer shall cause the building to be posted and remain closed until violations are corrected and abated, or alternatively, cause repairs to be made. So the ordinance does authorize, uh, the code enforcement officer, or the city, I should say, to make repairs after a period of time. Repairs made must comply with applicable codes and be inspected by those with jurisdiction. Final inspection by the code enforcement official. All inspectors must be permitted to enter all parts of the building, uh, as needed. And, uh, buildings can only be occupied in whole or in part after you, as city council, adopt an ordinance to allow occupancy in whole or in part. Uh, costs incurred by the city or others, um, uh, local government, the city are a lien. This, uh, condemnation order would overlap the fire marshal's, uh, order to evacuate. And, uh, Angie, is there anything that you want to note or?
No, um, there was a, a draft ordinance in your packet. I've modified it slightly when you get to that point of considering it. Um, Mr. Edney is here on behalf of the property owners. And, um, due process would require that we hear from them and we hear from him. And so I guess if you all don't have any more questions of staff, the floor would be Mr. Edney, and Madam Mayor, if that's your priority.
Yeah, I was going to ask. Good, yeah. Mr. Edney would like to make a presentation.
I'll be fairly brief, and then I'll give you a chance to read over. It's, it's a one-page summary of a little bit I know. I, I was hired on April the nineteenth, so I'm still trying to get my feet wet. Right there to do it. Are a LLC. They actually live in Georgia, so they're absentee owners. I think that's one of the biggest problems they've had. Bought it May of twenty-one for four point two million, four point one million dollars. There's a mortgage on it for three point five million. And I think I saw in some of your paperwork, somebody values it now at two points some million. Based on what you've seen tonight and what I've seen tonight, the thirty days that, uh, staff gave them to correct all these problems is wokenly inadequate. It's gonna take a good bit of time to do what needs to be done. One question I think you asked that wasn't answered, are there licensed folks working on it now? Absolutely, they're on. Uh, all in electric has pulled a permit, and Johnson Controls have pulled permits. And according to, uh, the fire marshal, Johnson has done about ninety percent of the work on the sprinkler system. From what I've been told, my folks have committed between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars now out of their pocket already. Another sixty-plus thousand is gonna have to be paid, um, which they're willing to, to pony up and pay. They'd be crazy not to, because the, the investment they've got in it already. If they walked away from it, nobody wins. So what I'm generally gonna ask tonight is, you've got another meeting July second, I think. I would ask you just to postpone and see how much work they get done between now and then. It's taken them a lot to get things going. Partially because they're not from around here. They don't know who to call and how to call. They've sort of addressed that. I think they have have come late to the show, but they put money up, and, and they proved that they are intent on doing something with it. A little bit ago, you folks rejected a zoning request that would change the use of it. Um, I think that puts more emphasis on them now to, uh, speed things up and get things going. It's gonna be shut down until it's safe to, to go in there. My folks wouldn't, wouldn't have any other way, but we need to get it opened up as soon as we can to get some income. Because these folks are way out of pocket, and they've got to get some income coming back in. They are still making the mortgage payments, so there's no worry about the bank coming in and taking over, at least anytime soon. It's just, it's, it's, it's hard to follow that act. I mean, that place is in a lot more shape than I think most anybody would have known. I don't know if the chief is still here or not, but if you find that manager living in the place, arrest him, because he's got no business being there. You guys control the water, turn it off. The annex. If there's no CO, then I don't know. A lot of Duke Powers got juice to the place, and that, a lot of those things should have been addressed a long time ago. But bottom line, I think we're trying. My folks have, have shown some effort. So I would just ask you to give us I think you're gonna meet on the twenty-fifth. If you, whatever period of time to, uh, let us put our money where our mouth is. According to what my folks tell me, we can have a lot of this stuff done in just a matter of a few weeks. I'll answer any questions, but that's just kind of where I'm at tonight with, with what I, I know so far.
Mr. Edney, I know you're just now getting on board with this, but they've had plenty of opportunities, enough time to have addressed these issues. I don't care if they were absent owners. Apparently, there was a communication power thing with their, um, management. And you want us to give them thirty more days or two more weeks to, to correct all these issues? Is that what you're asking?
I- if your man hadn't stood up and said that they've done ninety percent of stuff, at least on the sprinklers, then I think I, I I don't know, I could ask for the straight face. But they put two, three hundred thousand bucks out of their own pocket. Johnson Controls, the sprinklers and all that stuff.
I do believe it was also noted that those were not installed properly, or there are issues still with them.
That was beforehand.
Three days ago.
Three days ago. Those heads are leaking. They're not installed properly. And they failed their own inspection. Johnson Controls, they're a national licensed company.
And they don't know how to do their own work?
That's kind of between you and your, uh,
Maybe that's why they haven't been told to do that, or something. I don't know. I'm working a lot of stuff tonight.
And I know it's not your fault, Mr. Edney, but you see my point, right?
I do, yeah. I mean, and I would say this, that they bought it in twenty-one, and it was probably junky back then. And they probably should have been working on it a little bit over all these years, if they wanted to make a good go of it. But we have had COVID, we've had hurricanes, we've had a lot of other stuff.
I agree. I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, so.
I, I can, I am too.
Just bear with me.
I appreciate that you're doing your job. Yeah, I appreciate that you're doing your job, but they, they completely failed at what they've been doing. And there have been complaints over there for years. This has been going on, and they've done nothing. Worse than nothing.
Well, I did go to several meetings there, like, since they've purchased it on a weekly basis. And I noticed myself a rapid decline in the building from when we started meeting there to these pictures that we've just seen. I think it's gone beyond, we need enough time. Now they're just being negligent. There are plenty, and there's no way that all of the things we saw from photos that were taken on the second is gonna get done in the next month.
But whoever's doing it, whether it's the city doing it, or them, or whoever, somebody's gotta be, have, be on top of it and show progress. You guys take it over and hire somebody to do it. If you can find somebody, it's gonna take a long time, and then it'll go to sell at courthouse steps, and it'll I don't know what it'll turn into.
It's just a pattern of negligence at this point.
Yeah, I think they had.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
But they have more incentive to try to save it than anybody else.
They should have had incentive to do it.
But they got a million bucks in it that nobody else has got, that they stand to lose.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to, like, keep hammering it, but.
So I, you know, I applaud you for taking this on there, and
Yeah.
And I stayed, nothing directed towards you. It's just pure negligence.
Mm-hmm.
Slum lords.
I appreciate that. We all remember it when it was a Holiday Inn in the sixty-seventies, whatever.
That may be, you might remember, but I'm too young.
I've got more gray hair than you do.
Do you want a copy of this, the, the updated? And I'm gonna pass it down.
Thank you. This is a public hearing?
It is. We do need to, you're right. Thank you. I forgot.
Okay, um, anything else from council before I open the public hearing? Okay, Madam Clerk has his public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes.
The mayor has.
Okay, we'll open this public hearing. Does anyone in the public wish to speak? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Close that public hearing. Counsel? Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Number one does provide a place to list the conditions that you have found to exist. And so.
Where's number one?
On the second page, now they're ordained. We didn't go ahead and fill those out, but the conditions that were listed in the order are the conditions that still exist. So I would recommend that we fill the order in with the conditions as listed in the order. And that should be sufficient. I mean, so if you adopt the ordinance, you could just say, and let the ordinance reflect the conditions that were found to exist in the order dated. Let's see, what's the order date? April. February twenty-eighth, thank you. And it does provide that, it has to come back to you to amend this ordinance to allow it to open. And it is the totality of the circumstances. I think if the only thing that had existed were some of the health code violations, we wouldn't be here. I mean, eventually there's going to reach a point in the, in the progress that it's going to be a gray area, whether they should be allowed to open in whole or in part. And I feel like that's within your judgment and jurisdiction to make that call. And so I do think progress reports are going to be required. And that they probably will come back, assuming that they can get the common areas all fixed and address maybe, you know, I'm pulling this out there, maybe the first floor of rooms or something. And then could demonstrate, you know, there may be some stages in here before some partial opening if things proceed as they should. And so that's why I drafted it so that it would come back to you all to make that call.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council adopt an ordinance to order the structure of two oh one Sugarloaf Road to be vacated and closed to comply with the standards of chapter twelve, article three of the city code, and to allow the order of conditions from two twenty-one of twenty twenty-five to apply to this order.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the condemnation order, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and it is under condemnation at this point. Hope they can do something with it. I'd much rather see that, the city have to step in and do it. Thank you all. Staff. County representatives as well.
So all the utilities be shut off now?
So everything can be shut off?
I don't know, I answered a question off by now.
What was the question?
All utilities get shut off automatically?
To the main building, no, but to the annex it should be.
Okay. To the annex.
If, if it can be.
Well, right, that's why I say it should be. The annex is a separate notice of violation that we've talked about issuing a whole separate notice of violation for the annex. This only covers the main building. The annex is under, should be closed because it never received a CO. And so the NOB would be to board it up and make it so that it can't be accessed.
I think there's some question about the power being separate. There's some.
Gotcha.
That could be the case, yeah.
I think that's what, I think that's what Fire Marshal has determined, the second building is connected. There's one meter for the whole.
For the whole thing.
I see.
Interesting.
The water, this is an aside, but the water, it is going to be shut off soon due to non-payment for the whole facility. You might want. Oh, okay, all right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. On to new business, annexation analysis and.
Wait, hang in there, Sam.
I'll leave the new business.
We should, we should see how many public hearings we can have in one meeting, one time.
I feel like that was enough.
Yes.
Six.
Talk fast.
All right, yes. So the city has initiated an annexation analysis for you all to consider for the property located on Upward Road. I will be presenting our annexation analysis and advisement. So the property is located along Upward Road on the eastern side of I twenty-six. It's nine point three acres and it's currently a production facility for Flat Rock Cider. The owner is planning to add a tap room on the property as well. The map on the right shows the property highlighted in yellow, you can just barely see it on the right-hand side there. And it's approximately ten thousand six hundred and seventy-four feet as the crow flies from the contiguous city limits. The county future land use designation for the site is employment and industry. This classification encourages industries such as manufacturing, agriculture, distribution offices, and research and development. This designation is located along highways and areas with utility access with large available parcels. And a majority of these areas will be served by utilities. The city's future land use designation is rural residential. This classification encourages low-density residential development comprised of single-family detached homes on lots one acre or greater.
Can you go back?
Yes.
I just want to confirm that the city has a lower density standard than the county in the zoning designation right now?
Yes, that is correct, or a lower intensity, I guess, yeah. Yeah, and I'll talk a little bit about that in just a few slides. So here you can see kind of the visions for those two areas. So on the left is the county's industrial centers. And then on the right is mostly single-family properties with large lots. So the county has the property currently designated as residential district one or R one. And the current production facility is classified as an agricultural production use. And adding the tap room has already been approved by the county. And it's an accessory use to that agricultural production. And there, so therefore it's allowed by right in the zoning. The city would likely designate the property commercial highway mixed use. If zoned, the current production facility would be considered light manufacturing and the tap room would be an accessory use. So it would also be allowed by right with the city zoning. So staff has analyzed the proposed use and it does align better with the county's comprehensive plan than the city's comprehensive plan. However, as I just mentioned, it is allowed by right with the current zoning in both, well, current zoning for the county and then the proposed zoning from the city. So you have three options that you can consider. So you could require annexation and provide sewer. And if that were to happen, then it would proceed likely under CHMU zoning district within the city. You could not require annexation but provide sewer. And in that case, it would be allowed within the county zoning. You could also not allow annexation and provide no sewer. And I've drafted a motion for proceeding and then a motion if you don't want to proceed with the annexation. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
What is the desire of the property owner? Do we know?
So I believe this was sparked because they did want to have that tap room on site. And because of that, they, they would need sewer in order to.
I can elaborate a little more to that. He's very early in the process. He definitely needs sewer to operate the tap room and to do any expansion of the ciderry. So he's got to have sewer as far as annexation or not annexation. He's not opposed to annexation, but he wants to, he wants to evaluate it. So that's why, you know, I previously spoken to council and said, you know, from a city manager standpoint, based on location, agricultural use, it would be my recommendation to council to provide access to sewer and let it be the property owner's choice, whether he's annexed or not annexed, based on what's best for his business model. And I'll be glad to answer any questions regarding that as we've talked, our team has talked about it. So they'll probably point it back to me, but that's fine.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move the council direct staff not to move forward in reviewing the annexation petition located at nine twenty-five Upward Road and owned by Four JS Produce Apples LLC, Flat Rock Cider. The subject property will remain under Henderson County zoning jurisdiction. And I do further move that the city sewer can be extended to the subject property.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Would, would this preclude if he would choose to annex?
So I think it's always, the person always has choice. So if he's, if he so chose to, that was in his best interest, he could always, under state law.
Still could even.
Yes, ma'am.
With this, with this motion.
You want to change the motion?
I would modify it to say that he not be required to annex as a condition of proceeding sewer. So that that would leave open his choice.
So not moving forward with an annexation petition is not equivalent to that, or?
Well, you'd have to, you've already made the motion to not move forward with annexation. So if he petitioned, you'd have to make another motion to move forward, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Undo the action.
Okay, I'd like to revise my motion. The city council staff. Well, basically, I move that we allow him to get access to sewer. And if he chooses to annex, then he can petition to us again. That's what I'd like to do.
Thank you.
That's formal.
They're okay?
Yes, ma'am.
That's fine. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. He can have the sewer and it would be very nice if he did choose to annex, but we're not required.
Really appreciate it.
Yes. All right, next, letter of support for the City of Saluda Water System merger integration assistance grant.
Thanks for hanging out, Adam.
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council, Adam Sturtevant, Utilities Director. The item before you is a letter of support for the City of Saluda for some funding that has become available from the state, kind of coming out of Hurricane Helene and resilience of into infrastructure. But backing up a little bit, if you recall, about two or three years ago, I think in twenty twenty-two, Saluda received a grant to study a merger or regionalization of their water system in part or in whole to the City of Hendersonville's water system. So we have, that process has been ongoing for the past two or three years. It's been a very good collaborative process. We're approaching the end of that study, which has identified several projects or deficiencies or items that are needed in order for a merger. A lot of those items, for example, are water meter integration, so to bringing that AMI metering system, automated metering system for Saluda to be compatible with Hendersonville's metering system. They also need to have some improvements at their pump stations and tanks, getting those incorporated into a better telemetry system, SCADA system that matches ours, adding generators to those systems where they do not have them, and also providing some better locates and mapping of their water system where they do not have great locations. So there's a good opportunity for the City of Saluda to access some funding to complete some of these improvements at this time as this grant funding is available. The state does require a letter of support from this board, just supporting that effort for Saluda to apply for this money and then hopefully carry it out. Saluda would be the applicant, the recipient of the grants, and they would perform, perform all the work. Acceptance of the money does not bind the city in any way of a merger of taking over the Saluda water system. So there's a letter that John would sign that is included in the packet. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Madam Mayor, I move city council to adopt the resolution by the city council of support for the City of Saluda merger integration grant.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the resolution for the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and we've got that. I believe John just couldn't sign that one. Thank you. Next, a discussion regarding North Oak Street and Fifth Avenue intersection.
Hey, bro, member of city council, Mayor President Hensley asks us to take a look at North Oak Street and Fifth Avenue intersection. There's been a number of motor vehicle accidents at this location. I'm going to ask Public Service Director Britt Netwiler to come up and make a presentation regarding. He's got some slides regarding, we took a look at the intersection and the number of accidents, had a conversation today.
Gather a few last-minute slides. Good evening, the hearing council. So we briefly, we've had a few weeks, I think, about four weeks or so, we've started to gather some of the crash data and Chief Myhand and his staff put this together or pulled the crash, the police reports. And I kind of gleaned our, we gleaned this data out of it. So there have been, what is it? Twelve? Eleven crashes over the last four years or so. And you can kind of see the mostly property damage, you know, it is a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. All of the causes of the, there was actually one additional crash that was likely alcohol-related that was just a single vehicle. All of these crashes involve multiple vehicles. And the causes were, on all of these were failure to yield from Oak. So in other words, if you're not familiar with that intersection, that there is a blinking yellow light on Fifth Avenue for folks traveling east and west. And there's a flashing red light and stop signs at Oak on, coming from the north and coming from the south. So the, the fourth column over there describes the direction that the vehicle would have been traveling on Oak. And then the comments are just kind of gleaned from the police report. You know, most, I'd say the majority, the vehicle stopped, but couldn't, either couldn't see cross traffic or didn't yield to cross traffic. So in other words, they just kind of slowed down or stopped at the stop sign and kind of rolled on through. And then there are several where the vehicle did not stop at the sign. So just today, I happened, me and Matt and Allison were actually at Safe Streets for Western North Carolina meeting up at AB Tech that the MPO put on. And just in general, I think, I think you all are familiar with this, but the MPO has been working on this report for the last year. It's almost ready for primetime to be released. And as part of that, it's basically, it's called Vision Zero. It's to, it's to reduce and eventually eliminate serious and fatal injuries due to the crashes, vehicular crashes by the year twenty fifty. So it's an ambitious goal. But this report, which I, like I said, it's not completely been released yet, but it will be very, very soon. We've seen some of the data. And one of the pieces that they have released is this safety countermeasure library that's on the right-hand side there. on the right-hand side there. So this slide is a clip out of that, and it's basically a means to give municipalities like us, municipalities and counties, and the DOT, quite honestly, some information and kind of a best practices on coming up with countermeasures for various types of crashes. So I just pulled, this is from, from that guide that the MPO just released, or their consultant just released, and I just kind of highlighted one of the recommendations that we would be talking about. So the, the table shows specific countermeasures, urban or rural, you know, it's a little, you know, this is probably more of the urban setting slash rural. But the CRF percentage is the crash reduction factor. So basically, the higher the number, the more likely that that particular measure would reduce crashes at, you know, in this case, in intersection. They also looked at, you know, cars traveling off, going off-road and things like that. So there, there are lots of particular crash types that are in this particular guide. So, so I thought it was interesting timing that we just had that meeting today and just actually got our hands on this today. And we just had a meeting, John and I, and Chief Myhand, and Tom, and Richard Shook, our civil engineer, had a meeting earlier today and came up with some proposed countermeasures and improvements that would be kind of a lower cost. And it should, you know, obviously, we're all about data, but what we would like to see is, we'd like to have an opportunity to implement some of these, some or, or all of these three, which would be kind of a painted, in the middle, you'll see a painted stop, stop ahead on the pavement in both directions, so coming from the north and from the south on Oak Street, and a stop ahead, so basically, kind of a warning sign in either direction on Oak, that there is a stop ahead, which hopefully that will impact the, you know, just running on through the stop sign. And then the, the sign on the right would be a cross traffic does not stop. There were a couple of instances in the police reports where the individual that kind of stopped and then kind of went on through the, you know, Fifth, and then was, then struck a vehicle or was struck by a vehicle. They mentioned that they didn't realize, that they kind of assumed that Fifth Avenue stopped, that, you know, that that traffic stopped. So hopefully, by that cross traffic does not stop sign, if it's prevalent, that could help in that regard. And our, you know, our hope would be to implement these countermeasures, hopefully start to see a reduction in crashes at the intersection, and if not, start to look at other countermeasures. There's a thing called the MUTCD, which is the, Tom?
Traffic Control Device.
I don't know if you got that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Which is the, it's a federal document that we have to abide by when we're changing intersections, you know, implementing four-way stops or traffic lights or whatever. And so there are various warrants that are involved with each of those. And so one, one of the precursors to that is we would actually have to perform a study, an engineering study. We could perhaps do it ourselves. We haven't really looked into that quite yet. We don't have any traffic engineers on staff, but we might be able to muddle our way through that. But that would be a precursor to any kind of further countermeasure that we would do, like a four-way stop, or obviously, definitely a, a traffic signal. So that's it. I don't have any more slides. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Chief Myhand's here, or Tom's here, or John's obviously here, if we can answer any questions that you may have.
Some of them said that they stopped, but, and they didn't see the other car coming. I mean, are there visual barriers?
There, there are some sight distance issues there, but the challenge is, most of the sights, sight distance impacts are on private property. So, you know, we could, I don't know if we've done this before, but we could potentially reach out to property owners regarding, you know, if it's a, in particular, I know there's a grove of hollies in an area, there's a sign in another area, you know, we could reach out to property owners to, we, I, I don't think that we have the authority to remove anything. I don't know, Angie, we haven't really talked.
Do we have any, do we have ordinances on how close signs can be to the road, though?
That I don't know.
Because when you're coming down from the Y, you cannot see up Fifth Avenue because of the, the business sign that's there, because it's very, very, you cannot see up. And honestly, I think when coming from the opposite direction and headed towards the Y, even, even when you're coming out, there's like a big tree in my front yard that I think impairs, you know, visibility. And if that, if that is an ongoing issue, we'll take it down if we have to. But it's, I mean, there are, the accidents are getting more frequent for sure, and last week's accident, they actually drove into the front yard of the dentist office across the street, and stopped very short of the front door of their office, almost hit a pedestrian who was walking on the sidewalk. I have personally, like administered first aid to an older gentleman that, you know, came through, hit somebody, and he went into the front yard of that accountant's office and then hit a tree next to that one. So I mean, there's, the accidents are not, I mean, they're sad when they come through. It, so you're saying we would have to have an engineering study to do a four-way stop?
Yeah, to meet the MUTCD, we would. But like I said, I don't know, you know, I haven't gone through, I kind of pulled this together pretty last minute, so I haven't had an opportunity to kind of read through it in detail to figure out what that engineering study might be.
I'm not into like spending tons of money to do a traffic light or anything like that, but I do think, I do think a four-way stop would be better there than still allowing just complete movement of traffic, because people are very confused there still.
Yeah. It'd probably help slow people down up the avenue, too.
And people fly down Fourth and Fifth, but I do think a four-way stop would be better than, I mean, I like all the conservative measures that we can do, but I definitely, especially with increased and bike ped that we're having, and, you know, more people on the sidewalks from, you know, Fourth and Fifth getting to Acuña, I just, you know, worried about it.
Mm-hmm.
And I was saying, we don't know how much those three things that you proposed are going to cost us.
Cost-wise, they're pretty inexpensive.
I just did a review.
I know there was a $3 sign next to the thing on the table from the MPO.
Yes, signs are a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah.
So we could do that stuff in the meantime.
We can all, we can do that in-house.
And we could do it in the meantime, while we work on something else.
How long makes sense to monitor? Like, like we have, that's been four crashes in the past 12 months that you showed us. One was in June 22nd, was the fourth previous one. So does like reevaluating in a year make sense, or do you want to just go four-way if we can?
I, I think we need a four-way stop there. But I mean, that's my opinion.
I don't disagree with that.
If, if there's a consultant that would look at it and just analyze the intersection, and if they decided that it wasn't, then I would feel fine with that, too. But I do think there needs to be a four-way stop. I think it would really help.
Yeah.
I'm open to the other measures until somebody could make that professional opinion.
So what I'm hearing is we implement what we recommended and then use the MUTCD to evaluate the four-way stop.
Yeah.
Bring back an analysis and traffic count, we need to do traffic counts and things like that.
Yeah. Yeah, we got some preliminary data, but I don't know if it's in the format that we need, so we'll look at that. One thing to keep in mind is part of the MPO's study, and, and we're, we're trying to gather some of the, the crash information and kind of have it in more of a, kind of a GIS centric format, so we can actually start looking at some other intersections, because you mentioned either hiring a consultant or doing it in-house, but it might be a good opportunity to look at some other intersections as well, to see, you know, other improvements that could be made.
Were you made aware of any additional grants that would allow us to do that, too?
No, I mean, DOT has been pretty good about, they've, they've funded some like rapid flashing beacons just north up at the Y. They are doing finally supposedly that kind of crossing, the pedestrian crossing there at 64 in Oak, that's been in the works or talked about for years and years. They do have funding. Matt just sent an email to the division or district engineer today to see where that project was, because we were thinking that that was going to happen. There's another one on 191, and I think North Ridgewood, maybe, that would be another rapid flashing beacon. So they, I mean, they do have, that's come through DOT, and they've got some safety money for that, but I'm not aware of any other money outside of that, but we can certainly talk to Tristan and find out.
Thank you. This might be dumb, but it's late, and it's only us. What about, is it, is a mirror helpful for visibility across the corner for the meantime? Like if you're coming north or south on Oak, a catty corner mirror, so you can see oncoming traffic?
I've seen that for driveways, but I, I don't, I don't know that's.
I think that might be too far away from where you are in the intersection.
Oh, yeah, because it, the, it would like distort by the time you get there.
Yeah, you mean too far away.
I don't know that that's a.
I don't feel concerned about putting an unapproved, unapproved red.
You're looking like the Cascades.
Yeah. We definitely want to be in compliance.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I know it's, you know, outside of the box, that's for sure. I think we got it, direction. Thank you.
Okay. So we don't need a motion?
No, I think we do.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Appointment to Fireman's Relief Fund.
Yes, Mayor Vol, member of city council, we do need to appoint a city council member to replace former council member Keller's spot on the Fireman's Relief Board.
Hi.
Her, go ahead.
Happy to do it, if no one else would like to do it.
Man, Gino, but.
Hey, if Gino wants to do it, let Gino do it.
I'd love to.
Great.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move city council appoint council member Gino Baxter to the Fireman's Relief Fund.
Okay, are there any further nominations?
Putting on a soft spot for the fire.
If not, those in favor of appointing council member Baxter to the Fireman's Relief Fund, say aye. Those opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. You.
Once a decade.
Perfect, that fits right in my schedule.
Or in times of hurricanes.
All right, special appropriations.
Mayor Vol, you have a set of motions at your place. Because of potential conflicts, we have mapped this out for you. The first one would be, starts at council member Simpson, we go through that, to approve for the Boys' Club, and then council member Lawrence would then recuse herself for the foundation, Education Foundation, and then finally, council member Baxter would recuse herself for Children, Family, and we'd approve those, and then you could approve the remaining for the final.
Madam Mayor, I want to disclose that I am currently engaged in performing work for the Boys and Girls Club of Henderson County. I have clarified with them, no funds from the city can be used to pay for the work that I am doing for them. I would also like to disclose that I have not participated in the special appropriations process for this nonprofit. However, in order to avoid a possible conflict of interest, I request that the city council permit me to recuse myself from voting on the special appropriations for this nonprofit.
Thank you. Is there a council member who would like to make one of the other motions?
Madam Mayor, I would like to disclose that I have a role in the Henderson.
Wait, no. We need the, we need the motions.
I'm sorry. I move that, Madam, I move that the city council excuse council member Simpson from voting on the special appropriation for the Boys and Girls Club of Henderson County.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of excusing council member Simpson, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and she is excused from this vote.
Madam Mayor, I move the city council approve the special, special appropriations for the Boys and Girls Club of Henderson County.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of approving the appropriation for Boys and Girls Clubs, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and that special appropriation has been approved. All right, now.
Madam Mayor, I would like to disclose that I have a role in the Henderson County Education Foundation. I have not participated in the special appropriation process for this nonprofit, and request that the city council permit me to recuse myself from voting on the special appropriation for the Henderson County Education Foundation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council excuse council member Lawrence from voting on the special appropriations for the Henderson County Education Foundation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of excusing council member Lawrence, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and council member Lawrence is excused from this vote.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council approve the special appropriation for the Henderson County Education Foundation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of approving the appropriation for the Henderson County Education Foundation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and that has been approved.
Madam Mayor, I would like to disclose that I have a role in the Children and Family Resource Center. I have not participated in the special appropriations process for this nonprofit, and request that the city council permit me to recuse myself from voting on the special appropriations for the Children and Family Resource Center.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council excuse council member Baxter from voting on the special appropriations for the Children and Family Resource Center.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of excusing council member Baxter, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and council member Baxter is excused in this vote.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council approve the special appropriation for the Children and Family Resource Center.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the appropriation for Children and Family Resource Center, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, the motion carries, and that appropriation has been approved. Now, we have the rest of them.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council approve the remaining special appropriation allocations as presented.
I'm ready to go, y'all.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the remaining special appropriations, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, the rest of the appropriations are approved. Thank you. Okay, got that one done. Boards and Commissions.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask that we, role we, boards, commissions, committee of departments, etc.
You're here.
Okay. Is there any oppos, any one object to, um.
Well, you're laughing.
To postponing these to the next meeting?
My only concern is that we're probably not having a second meeting this month, and so then the boards are going to be.
No, it would be July.
A month without.
So it'd be July.
Members.
It's your call. Don't look at me.
The four of you can all rule me.
It would have to be a month anyway, right? Because we don't vote at the.
Well, sometimes we do.
Oh, yeah.
It's up to you guys. I just think that some of the boards, especially the Downtown Main Street Board, would be without five people. Which I think means they wouldn't be able to.
Well, you could just do the downtown.
We'll see that one.
Then let's just do that one, and we'll do the others later. I think that's fine.
All right. Good work.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council reappoint Marjorie Voe to a term expiring June 28, and Phil Wilmot, Wilmot, to a term expiring in June 2028. Don't get on my board.
Okay. We have nomination.
Can we, can, can I read all five, and then we just vote on them all at one time?
Sure.
Excellent. I move the city council reappoint Phil Wilmot to the Downtown Main Street Advisory Board to his second three-year term expiring in June 2028. I further move that we appoint Cheryl Solomon to the Downtown Main Street Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring in June 2028. I further move that we appoint Jenny Breedlove to the Downtown Main Street Advisory. I further move that we appoint Jenny Breedlove to the Downtown Main Street Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-eight. And lastly, I further move that we appoint Herman Holt to the Downtown Main Street Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring in June twenty-twenty-eight.
Okay, so that is five members, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mark Paveo, Phil Wilmot, Cheryl Solomon, Jenny Breedlove and Herman Holt have been nominated for the Downtown Main Street Advisory Board. Are there further nominations? Not those in favor of the five names mentioned for the Downtown Advisory, Downtown Main Street Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it and those five are appointed.
Thank you.
It'll take us ninety seconds to just do the rest. Ninety seconds.
All right.
Read on, read on, girl.
Madam Services.
I move that the City Council reappoint Melissa Vazquez to the Animal Services Advisory Board for a three-year term ending in June twenty-eight. I also move that the City Council appoint Jean Greason to the same term of expiring June twenty-eight and Joy Edwards to the same term expiring June twenty-twenty-eight.
Okay. Melissa Vazquez, Jean Greason and Joy Edwards have been nominated for Animal Services Advisory Committee. Are the further nominations? Not those in favor of those three, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it and they are appointed. ABC Board.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council reappoint Marcia Kane to the Blue Ridge ABC Board to a three-year term ending in June twenty-twenty-eight. I move that the City Council reappoint, is that Bock?
Bocky.
Bocky to the Blue Ridge ABC Board to a three-year term ending in June twenty-eight.
Okay, Marcia Kane and Paul Bocky have been nominated for Blue Ridge ABC Board. Are the further nominations? Not those in favor of Marcia Kane and Paul Bocky, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries and they are appointed.
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council reappoint Rona Regan and Libby Colina to the Board of Adjustment for three-year terms ending in June twenty-twenty-eight.
Okay. Rona Regan and Libby Colina have been nominated for Board of Adjustment. Are the further nominations? Not those in favor of those two, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, we've got those two. Business Advisory Committee.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council reappoint Andrea Martin, Tiffany Lucy, Sarah Cosgrove and Adam Justice to three-year terms ending in June twenty-twenty-eight.
Okay. Andrea Martin and Tiffany Lucy, Sarah Cosgrove and Adam Justice have been nominated for Business Advisory Committee. Are the further nominations? Not those in favor of the four listed, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries and they are appointed.
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council appoint Ariel Williams and Clarence Oakman to the Tree Board to fill unexpired terms which will expire in June twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay. Ariel Williams and Clarence Oakman have been nominated for the Tree Board. Are the further nominations? Not those in favor of those two for Tree Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries and are appointed to the Tree Board.
I feel so much better now, you guys, thank you.
Shouldn't take that. Okay. City Manager Report.
Your contingency report is attached for your information. Two quick announcements. We will be canceling the June twenty-eighth meeting that winds, our second meeting in June will be canceled due to some vacations and everyone will need coffee in the morning. So, go buy Dunkin' Donuts between seven-thirty and nine-thirty. HPD will, tomorrow's National Donut Day.
You're doing that again?
They're gonna be, they're gonna be passing out donuts and serving folks from seven-thirty to nine-thirty.
I had so much fun last year. See you there.
All right. Thank you.
He did in the drive-through last year.
Any, anything from City Council? Nope. Close session?
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one A-one and six. The disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States are not considered public record within the meaning of chapter one thirty-two. Other general statutes that you consider the qualifications competent for the character or fitness of an individual public officer or employee.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of entering closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.